Thank you. We do not have Board Member Cordero with us this evening. She has a virus, and I suspect there's a lot of that going around. We have Spanish translation available. Mina, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself at the microphone.
Right here, front and center, sorry.
And we also have headsets for the hearing impaired, as indicated on the slide. There is no action to report from closed session. Now we're on to acceptance of donations. And before a motion is made, I'd like to point out that one of our donors, the Barona Band of Mission Indians, made a donation to Cesar Chavez, not for the art program, but for supplemental social studies materials. So I wanted to make that clarification, but it's a wonderful, long list. Is there a motion?
I move with gratitude.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved 4-0. And of course, we don't have Mrs. Cordero with us tonight. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Brian Sarvas, Superintendent. I do have a presentation tonight. Would Officer John Williams please come forward? Santa Barbara Police Department Officer John Williams, a school resource officer, has been a familiar face— John, why don't you stand on the camera side— has been a familiar face on many of our campuses over the past decade. We've relied tremendously on him, and we understand that he's in for a change of assignment on February 1st. Officer Williams will be reassigned to the department's special enforcement team, gang unit, and we'll look forward to your service on that unit as well, John. We're pleased to recognize Officer Williams tonight. I have a packet of wonderful statements from various principals. Officer Williams, I'll hand that over to you, and I'd like to just share with you some brief excerpts from some of those. From Matt Zuchwitz, Adams Elementary School, Adams Elementary School Principal. Officer Williams was always readily available, calm, and extremely helpful in any situation. Dave Ortiz, Principal La Colina School. His expertise is in law enforcement, but he also has been highly effective as a counselor. John Beckio, Santa Barbara Junior High. He became a de facto part of our staff and provided guidance and support to school personnel on discipline issues. He cared about students becoming better citizens and learning from their mistakes. Paul Turnbull, Principal Santa Barbara High School. To say that John's work with students was exemplary would be an understatement. And Kathy Abney, Principal La Cuesta. He is compassionate and empathetic with students and families while also taking the hard line when necessary. Officer Williams, thank you for all you've done as a school resource officer.
Officer Williams, I just want to tell you, congratulations. You know, I know that you don't know any of us personally, but we see your name a lot, particularly with student discipline reports, and it's always really reassuring to know that someone was involved with these cases who we knew would deal with them fairly and also compassionately. So we really appreciate that, and I'm very happy that you will still be in our service, serving youth of this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It was an honor working with you.
Thank you so much. Superintendent's report.
Great. Well, we're in the middle of our open enrollment period. This is the open enrollment period for students entering kindergarten next year, or students who want to transfer to a school outside their attendance area. All the schools of choice are taking names at this point. Any transfers, including the elementary schools such as Open Alternative, Santa Barbara Community Academy, actually, the other elementary schools, and all of the secondary schools. In fact, all of our secondary schools are schools of choice. But it requires a transfer process, and the open enrollment period extends until March 1st. Please consult our website for a list of open houses. There's the website. Board Brief. Generally, on the second and fourth Friday of each month, my office issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area or can be provided through my office. On January 12th, the Board Brief included information on the English learner progress and critical standards for reading comprehension, as well as a report on 2006-07 categorical budget allocation updates. You'll hear more about that tonight. In fact, that's a lead-in to tonight's presentation on categorical programs and budgets, which compares December notifications to the estimated allocations calculated in March 2006 for the current budget year. Roosevelt narrows the achievement gap. Standard and Poor's School Evaluation Services identified 103 schools in the state that significantly narrowed the achievement gap between higher and lower performing student groups during the 2003-04 and the 2004-05 school years. Among the 36 California schools that closed the Hispanic white achievement gap—and that gap only—included Roosevelt Elementary School. Congratulations, Roosevelt Elementary School. The 10-10-10 finalists. As you know, the Film Festival is coming up. For the fourth year, as part of the Santa Barbara International Film Festival's 10-10-10 school student competition, student filmmakers and screenwriters have a chance to be mentored by industry professionals. There were 65 screenwriting submissions for local high school and college students this year. 10 10-page entries were selected. Five of the finalists are high school students, and five are college students. The five finalists in the high school screenwriting competition are Santa Barbara High School's Ian Wexler, San Marcos High School's Avery Medjic, Levi Michaels, and Kevin Tran, and Dos Pueblos High School's Alex Dunn. So we're well represented in the 10-10-10 festival. The five high school students' screenplays are being matched with the five high school students selected in the filmmaking competition. The filmmakers, winnowed from an original field of 30 applicants—this is a pretty extensive process—will direct a 10-minute film during the 10 days of the Film Festival. The films will be judged on filmmaking and screenwriting criteria, and this year, the five finalists in the student filmmaking competition are San Marcos High School's Ben Lee, and Santa Barbara High School's David Richardson, Ian Wexler, Ian Watson, and Tony Johnson. So we'll be looking forward to seeing their work. Every year, they have a showing on the final weekend of the Film Festival, and I believe it's usually Saturday afternoon where they show these films in case anyone's missed them. Upcoming events. San Marcos High School's vocal music concert will be held tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. On Friday, Cleveland will hold the 13th Annual Career Day for grades K through 6. There will be approximately 20 professionals meeting with students. February is Black History Month. There will be a district-wide string festival at La Cumbre Junior High on February 7. The preliminary rounds of mock trial will take place on February 24, and the county spelling bee will take place on February 28. So we have a number of events and activities coming up. And that's it for tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. Now we have a student report. And we have Brendan Faraday.
From Dos Pueblos High School.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Faraday, and I am the ASB representative for Dos Pueblos High School. In December, we had three drives—the toy drive, the canned food drive, and the penny drive. Under the toy drive, we raised 75 toys that helped over 50 families, and we raised over 500 cans of food. Both of those went to the unity shop during a time of the year that they have the greatest pressure. For the penny drive, we raised $4,765. That's all contributed by the students and teachers. And that's—there's very little incentive, and it's just basically the goodwill of the holiday. We also had an AIDS Awareness Day in December, where we had a speaker from Pacific Pride come and talk about what it was like to live with AIDS and the social implications of it. We had an open session that allowed 35 students to hear that. All schools will be participating in a Peace Week, February 5th through the 6th, which promotes awareness and social diversity. For Dos Pueblos High School, I know we'll have activities in the Greek every day promoting social diversity and awareness. Does the board have any questions?
No, but we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
And we hope we see you again soon. And don't feel any pressure to stay. I'm sure you have other things to do this evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cordero.
Thanks, Brendan. Bye-bye. Okay, public comments. It looks like we have a number of public comments. We ask that you submit a speaker slip. For those of you who are experienced speakers at our public comment, you know that it's three minutes with a 30-second warning. So Ms. Malakoff.
Our first speaker is Lauren Rodriguez, followed by Laura Baker.
Hi, my name is Lauren Rodriguez, and I am a teacher at La Cumbre Junior High School. And we were just told today that there's going to be a board workshop talking about the La Cumbre and the academy move, its proposal, or basically the plans for La Cumbre's future. It was set for February 8th from 5:00 to 7:00, and I hope that you know that our open house has been planned for February 8th at 6:30. And so that's a real conflict for us, because there are a lot of us who would really love to be able to participate in deciding our future, but we won't be able to be there because of the open house. So once you understand that conflict, I'm sure that you'll be able to change the date, and I'm expecting to hear about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Baker, followed by Kenneth Locke.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Laura Baker. I'm a teacher at La Cumbre Junior High, and I too am here to express my concern over the conflict of dates. Just today, at our staff meeting, we heard that the board workshop to discuss the academy move and all the issues surrounding that is scheduled for the same night as our open house. And that simply can't happen. Our open house has been set, our date has been set for a very long time. We just sent out 385 letters to parents, our feeder-school parents, saying, "Come, see us, hear about the wonderful things happening at La Cumbre." And if we have to change that—it's going to look a little funny to the public and to those feeder-parents—if we have to send out 385 new letters to say, "Oops, date change", we'll lose people coming in. That doesn't mention—that doesn't even count for all of the word-of-mouth that we have to other parents. And currently, La Cumbre this year has students that have come from El Montecito, Cold Springs, Notre Dame, OAS, Santa Barbara Charter, Santa Barbara Christian, and many of the other elementary schools in the district. So we grew by 80 students this year. We were the only school in the secondary district that grew, and it's a very big concern to us as a staff that if we can't showcase ourselves on the night of open house, and people are having a conflict of whether they should go to—the board meeting and be able to have their voices heard on a very important issue that could affect their decision as to whether they're going to go to La Cumbre or another junior high, or whether they have to—or whether they can go to the open house. I just think that that's wrong. I think that that's going to be too much of a conflict, and I would very much like for the board to find a different date for your board workshop. It's just too important to leave it at that. So I'm assuming this was just a problem error in communication, and, you know, it just happened. So I'm saying, please, change it. We were just in shock today and pretty upset at the staff meeting that this conflict is occurring. So please consider that. Thank you.
Kenneth Locke, followed by Karen Galavan.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I have a sign on my bike. I have—it's riding with—it's called "Welcome to the Next Paradigm." And I welcome this community to the next paradigm. I spent some time here communicating with you and then also City/County Arts Commission. Right now, I think I mentioned to you at the joint meeting, city-school board, as well as I mentioned to the city today, that about the basis of educational reform, and that's here and now type of thing. It's available. We need to reform the children, because the knowledge that they've been receiving is relatively non-integrated. The next paradigm, all knowledge is integrated. There's actually is a standard guidelines in relation to how education actually goes about its business. Currently, you guys don't have the proper guidelines established for doing a representative asset to the community. Right now, you're occurring a deficit on the community. I'm sorry to inform you of that.
30 seconds.
Okay. The certifications, this reform actually brings all teachers kind of back to the same place that their students will be at, at zero, and they'll rebuild from there. No exceptions. So I'm hoping to enlighten the community to this and then also welcome them into this next paradigm. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Galavan, followed by John Ferran.
Hi there. I just put that card in in case I wanted to speak. I wasn't sure of the format. But I'm a parent from Peabody Charter School, and I know there's been a bit of a hubbub about the cost of living adjustments and the teachers' desire, comparable increases to the surrounding school districts and Ventura, those areas. And of course, the cost of living here is much greater. So we—there's some other parents that came out with me to show our support for the teachers, and maybe it makes a difference, because when you guys look at them, you probably think, "Well, they just want more money." But I'm a parent with five children that have been in this school district, and I see how much they benefit from just the love and knowledge and guidance that these teachers pour out. And then I found this article someone gave me, and I thought it was interesting. You've probably seen this before, but—and bear with me, no boos, let me finish it. It says, "I for one am sick and tired of those high-paid teachers. Their hefty salaries are driving up taxes, and they only work nine or 10 months a year. It's time we put things in perspective and pay them for what they do, babysit. We can get that for less than minimum wage. That's right, I would give them $3 an hour and only the hours they work, not any of that silly planning time. That would be $1,950 a day, 7:45 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., 45 minutes for lunch. Each parent should pay $1,950 a day for these teachers to babysit their children." Now, how many do they teach in a day? Maybe 30? So that's 19.5 times 30 equals $585 a day. But remember, they work only 180 days a year. I'm not going to pay them any vacations. That's $585 times 180 equals 105,300? Hold on, my calculator must need batteries. What about these special teachers or the ones with master's degrees? Well, we could pay them minimum wage, just to be fair. Round it off to $7 an hour. That would be seven times six and a half hours times 30 children times 180 days equals 245,700 per year. Wait a minute, there's something wrong here. Anyway, we're all for the more better, because these teachers—I feel like it's the most important profession in the world next to parenting. So we would love to support them and see that happen for them. Plus—I did want to point out, the—we—as you know, Santa Barbara property, the prices are sky-high, and 1% of our property taxes, I thought, goes out to the schools. With these dramatic increases, where's all the increase going? I don't know if you guys know, or I don't—I don't know how it all works, but it was just food for thought. Thank you.
John Ferran, followed by—sorry. Come, come, shh. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Ferran, and I'm here—I have two children in the community academy. I'd certainly like to second what Karen Galavan just said about the board finding the money to pay the teachers, really, in effect, a living wage. And I know you don't have the money, but really, you should be devoting yourself to getting the money. As I said, I have a daughter, Serena, in fifth grade, and my son, Amal, in third grade at the community academy. And so we've been benefiting with Serena at the La Cumbre site now for 18 months. And I have to say, it's been wonderful for the academy and for those students there. I also want to say, this is the first I heard about the workshop, and also, I want to underline what the La Cumbre teachers just said about finding a date when the La Cumbre people can come, and I think that should be resolved as quickly as possible to put them at ease. Here's some input from the Santa Barbara Community Academy community, I think. All the surveys we've done, the polls we've done, say that we want to have the school back together. Option one, at one time, probably preferred by most of the parents until recently, would be to do it right here. But we've been told by the board that that can't be done. Option two now, I think, is the La Cumbre site. Option three, I don't really see another option, and if anyone does, I'd love to know about it. And that really brings us back, then, to option two. And this is now, I think, what the majority of parents at the academy want to see, if I'm not mistaken, according to the surveys, and I'm sure we'd be happy to do another survey to see what the thinking is at the moment. We had a wonderful meeting with Joanne Keynes in December, or early December or late November. She expressed to us a number of very legitimate concerns about the move, very practical matters. We want to resolve these concerns to her satisfaction, and I'm delighted to hear about the workshop, because I came here to propose that there be formed a committee of La Cumbre and Santa Barbara Community Academy, parents, teachers, and administrators, to look at each and every one of these points. I don't think this move should be made till the concerns, all of the concerns, are resolved. You don't decide to make the move and then realize there are concerns that are difficult, if not impossible, to resolve. First, you find out what the concerns are, then you resolve them, then you make the move, or you agree to make the move.
30 seconds.
Let's take the time to work this out, whatever time that takes, not rush that decision. And I believe with time and goodwill, that it can be worked out. And I look forward to the proposed workshop, which, as I said, I've just heard about 10 minutes ago. And definitely, let's pay the teachers a living wage in Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Come, come, Bhavmani, followed by Peter Platt.
I'm also a parent at—the—of two children at Santa Barbara Community Academy. John Ferran and I are lifetime partners, so we're talking about the same children and indeed the same school. We don't always agree on everything, and here's a chance for you all to hear that. We certainly agree that the school has to be unified. I think all of us in this room know that that's the only way for a school to operate, a school of choice, a school with core knowledge, where core knowledge is based on collaboration amongst teachers, precisely so that students can move from kindergarten right through up to grade eight, in fact, seven and eight being at La Cumbre, so that children get a certain sort of curriculum. The school has uniforms, which we all like. We like the year-round school. The thing is, La Cumbre has been wonderful to us. It has offered 4 through 6 some wonderful opportunities, and I would like to think that 7th and 8th grade also bring lots of opportunities to La Cumbre. It doesn't make sense for us, really, to not be unified. We have a son who's at this site, we have a daughter at that site. The after-school programs, the enrichment, they're all separate. A nightmare for two full-time working parents. In addition, though, however, the difficulty is that we need one principal. It's very, very hard for us, to be perfectly frank, if we have a principal downtown and a principal at La Cumbre, and they're different people. We're not sure when we—when I talk to other parents, because we're used to one principal, where should we go, who should we talk to, who knows the children, and so on. So I think my plea is really—because I know the school board is anxious to unify the school. We had the meeting with Joanne Keynes in November, and it was great, because there were these issues about dropping children off, how do we do it? We said—this is SBCA parents who were at the meeting said, "Yes, let's sit down and work together and work it out." But the thing that I would say is that I think there's a certain urgency. Like John, I don't believe we should rush decisions, but I also do feel that if we can get the school unified in July, thinking through all these issues, we're starting to move towards a very happy set of communities.
30 seconds.
The last thing I'd like to say is a point that I've made, but I'll just repeat it, is that I think, as the school is unified, under one principal, on a site where—which will benefit, I would like to say, the junior high students to have younger children, and will benefit the younger children to have the junior high there, I'd just like to ask if we could, after that workshop, again, let's think about the date, if we could think about what date we will try to unify the school at the La Cumbre site. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Platt, followed by Marie Henderson.
My name's Peter Platt, and I've been a parent of an SBCA Community Academy kid for six years. During each and every one of these years, we, the parents, the staff, and the students, have worked to achieve the promise of the downtown K through 6 school. This promise has been elusive at best. So we have endured inadequate campus facilities, teaching in off-site trailers, mandated class reductions, and split campuses. The downtown school has become an impossibility for reasons too numerous to recount. But through all of this, Santa Barbara Community Academy has survived. Core knowledge, year-round calendar, uniforms, and committed parents and staff have shown excellent academic performance. We now have an opportunity to put the community back into Santa Barbara Community Academy by moving our school to the La Cumbre Junior High School campus. Just as this is not what was promised so many years ago, and there are hurdles and issues that must be resolved, this is a solution that vacates the district office space for more economically beneficial use. It is a solution that increases the student population at La Cumbre campus, but still leaves adequate room for junior high school growth. It is a solution that unifies Santa Barbara Community Academy on one campus for the first time in three or four years at least. And lastly, it is a solution that by providing a campus for Santa Barbara Community Academy fulfills the promise made by the Santa Barbara School Board so many years ago. Also, I must say that getting parents to keep coming to meetings for six years about one issue, you can understand the attrition rate. And so I don't know how many parents will show up, but all parents feel very strongly about a unified campus, and the community part of Santa Barbara Community Academy can never be achieved with a split campus, not just because of two principals, but parents don't meet, students don't meet, et cetera. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Marie Henderson, followed by Kristen Shi.
I've spoken up here many times. I'm an academy parent of two children. I'm here tonight to hopefully bring up some other points that will speed you in making this decision to bring our school back together. I want to just refresh that this school has been in existence for seven and a half years. And when this school—it was established, there was a waiting list to attend this school. And when this school was established, there was a waiting list to attend this school. This school has endured a lot, a lot of indecision about what was going to happen. The parents have still brought their children here. The school has grown, and it wants to continue to grow, and it has the potential to grow. The other districts are looking at not taking transfers. Every student who comes to the Santa Barbara School District would be money to this school district. And I think you need to think about how this would be if we had a nice campus brought together on Lacumbre that other schools and people would think about bringing their kids here. I don't live in Santa Barbara, and people I know would embrace the academy if it wasn't for all this, year after year. What's going to happen? Where are we going to be? Are we going to be down at San Barbara Junior High? Where are we going to be? You know? If they didn't have to deal with that. Many people say, I would embrace the uniforms, I would embrace the school, the parent participation, the core knowledge, the year-round calendar. But they're not going to come to a school that doesn't have an adequate playground, doesn't have adequate facilities, you know? And I want to just show you, we have received, the parents, three different letters from Dr. Sarvis, asking us to, you know, be patient, the facilities master plan is not yet done, the deadline hasn't been met, we are going to have you oversplit for another year, you know? And the last letter says that in this next year, the district's master's facility plan will be completed and permanent school site will be determined. I urge you to make this decision. Our school starts in July '07. We have to make this decision. We can't just keep having meeting after meeting after meeting to just say the same things. The school needs a site, you know? Bring us together, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Shee, followed by Erin Cavazos.
Hi, my name is Kristin Shee. I'm a mother of four children. Two of them attend Santa Barbara Community Academy. I have Alex in fifth grade, and I have Andrew in first grade. I would like to see the Santa Barbara Community Academy unified, and right now, obviously, they're in two separate campuses. It is a hardship for us as parents, because obviously, we have to go to two different campuses. And I would like to see the siblings together. They would like to be together, and we would like to have them together. They're very close. We also have issues with safety. One, the bus, we don't like our children riding the bus. We worry about that. And also, the park, we don't like our children to, especially the youngest one, having to participate in the physical education in the park for a couple of different reasons, which I won't get into right now, but we've had a couple of issues with that. Also, it's, one thing that I've had difficulty with is, it's hard for me to recruit parents with children when I get really excited with the core knowledge and with the school and telling a parent about it and then saying, yeah, but I don't know where the school's going to be next year. And I'm not exactly sure, but, you know, part of it is going to be here and part of it's going to be there, but I'm not exactly sure. So it's, you know, it's really exciting to a parent, and they're like, yeah, but where's it? I don't really know. And it's been like that for so many years that it's just, it's kind of frustrating. And it's, and I think as a parent at the school, you know, with four kids, it's really exciting, but not knowing where the children are going to be, we've been so patient. And each year, we think, it's going to be better, it's going to be better. It's not. We have been patient, and we have been, you know, sticking it out, but we really are kind of running out of patience, and we really, you know, been really wanting to get this done. So we're just kind of hoping. So that's all that we're, that's my plea. So that's just kind of what I wanted to say, and thank you. Thank you for listening. So that's it.
Thank you. And last, Erin Cavazos.
Sorry, very petite, but also a parent of two students at the Santa Barbara Community Academy, a fifth grader and a kindergartner, again, split at the two campuses. I've been a parent for four years at this school. I am one of the rare parents that actually switched from a private school back to a public school. I was running a local nonprofit for youth in town and found that the kids I ran into from the academy came in and they did their homework, and they were well behaved, and I said, hmm, I've got these kids, and I think I know where I want them to go. And I transferred my kids into this school. And knew the problems and knew the facilities issues, but decided to stick with it. Not complaining about splitting up this year. Fortunate to have a lot of us in the same predicament who have car pools set up to try and go in different directions around town. The kids love this school. The kids enjoy their teachers. These teachers are amazing. I've been in public schools back east and here in Santa Barbara, and private schools, and by far, I've been the most pleased with these teachers. And the parents, the parent involvement in the school is amazing. You feel a sense of community. The inviting feeling that we felt as parents and students going to Lacumbre, my son, who's a fifth grader, was in Oliver last year, and I don't know if any of you saw it, but it was awesome. And my son enjoyed every moment of it, couldn't wait to start again, and now he's in Westside Story, and he's obviously not even bigger than me, and he's running around singing Westside Story songs, and he loves it. And it's just, it's a great feeling. So having the whole school move to that campus is, would be a thrill. I think a lot of us would agree that we already feel welcome there to a certain extent, and think that it really could be worked out if we address the issues that all the teachers do have, because we do need to listen to all of them. So again, we urge you to make some sort of a decision before our school year begins in July, because we would like to know where our kids will be. And again, my first and then sixth grader would love to be together, because it's kind of neat to show your little brother around the campus. So thank you for your time tonight, and look forward to your decision.
I neglected to announce that usually when we begin public comment or begin public comment on a particular agenda item, we close public comment at that point in time as well. I've got three more speaker slips. I do not want to cut people off, but I would like to ask, you know, that one, I'm going to have to turn away, I'm sorry. I would like to ask that people be as brief as possible. Armando Ortega, Christina, I am not going to be able to tackle your last name. Thank you. And Nancy Menez Casey. So if you could be as brief as possible, I would really appreciate it.
As you mentioned my name, my name is Armando Ortega. I have a kindergarten and a sixth grader. As you can see, my son, having grown through kindergarten all the way through sixth grade, it's been of a challenge, but we've adapted to it, and we're a school of choice. And for being that, it has grown to actually better than expected in the whole district. And I just think it's just a win-win situation if you do make that decision, and the reason being Lacumbre now accepted core knowledge, 7th through 8th grade. So now, can you imagine kindergarten through 8th grade going all the way through a one transition period? We're more than welcoming to embrace them, as of course, they can embrace us if you're going to make the right decision. And that's basically it. I know that you have a lot of things to do and a budget, but if you prolong the budget, it's never going to happen. Just the fact that this was going to become a school, but it went out of budget, don't make the same mistake again.
Hi, I'm Christina Giac, and I have a little girl in kindergarten at Mrs. Hernandez's class, and we just absolutely love everything about the school. Core knowledge, once again, we came from a private school. We're in Montecito. We chose this school for a number of reasons. Our little girl is just absolutely thriving. She loves it here. I just urge you to reunite the academy K-6 to the Lacumbre campus for the upcoming school year, once again, starting July 7th, '07. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Nancy Menez Casey.
Thank you. I would just like to urge the school board members once again to go ahead and expedite your decision and then make the pieces fall into place so that by, I think it's the 10th of July, the students can be reunited at one school site. I know the last time I was here, I heard that there were some issues with traffic, issues with sharing some of the facilities. If you will recall, some of you may recall, that when the school was first opened, they were at the Santa Barbara Junior High School site. And while they were there, they did share a library, they also shared a cafeteria, and many of the concerns that I think are being confronted at Lacumbre right now were resolved within the year, year and a half that they were there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to make public comment this evening. Now we are on to our consent agenda. Board members, any items that you have, questions, concerns about?
D5.
Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion?
Would you adopt consent agenda minus D5?
Second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, with the exception of item D5, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved 4-0. Now we are on to our action agenda. We will come back to item D5 later in the meeting. Item E1 is approval of the '06-'07 first interim financial report for the Santa Barbara School Districts. Dr. Sarvis?
Good. I'm sorry, I'm taking notes and scrambling here.
I know Mr. Diaz is going to make the presentation. I didn't know if you wanted to make an introduction.
That list of contributions is so long. Takes a long time to get to this. This is something that we have been awaiting. We do not have Bob Wolf here tonight. He's out on surgery leave. He's fine, though. And Ed Diaz, who is our assistant superintendent for business services, will be making the presentation. We do have other key, key staff members, and Ed, I'll let you introduce these people, who can also answer questions that the board may have about the interim budget. This is an interim budget. It's a presentation on the current year budget as it stands at this point in time. And this is key to our, what we can provide through negotiations for salaries, how the fiscal health of our districts, just to so many different things.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. First, I want to introduce the board to two very important ladies in our accounting department, Shirley Corpus and Patty Pimentel. They work tirelessly on the elementary and high school district budgets, and they agreed with some coercion on my part to come up and join me at the podium tonight. So I appreciate them being here. As Dr. Sarvis mentioned, the school district prepares an annual budget. It begins about this time of the year for the following year, and the board approves it in June. That budget is based on estimates of the best information you have at that time. Between July 1st and October 31st, that time period, the actual activity, spending and revenue activity come into the district is reflected in this first interim report. So this report, this report covers the period between July 1st and October 31st, so the activity in that time. I've broken it down simply this evening. We're going to show you a snapshot of the elementary district finances. The column that says adopted budget, that was the budget that was approved in June 30th, or for the July 1st year. The first interim is the activity reflecting through October 31st, and the difference is a result in either increased expenses or increased revenues. And down below, down here, we, for instance, you see this $726,000 number here, that correlates to the $726,000. So the increases in revenue that were over and above what was budgeted on July 1st, they are reflected in these numbers here. We received some money for the La Conchita disaster. It was additional ADA money, revenue limit money for La Conchita. We had an increase in the revenue limit '06-'07. We had some small programs. These numbers represent many, they're sums of many programs, they're not one big number. Mandated cost reimbursement, that was, we had underestimated that, that came in stronger. E-rate came in a little better than we thought. MAU, the medical Medicare administration activities, that came in a little lower than we expected. But the total, and the donations, the donations you can see were very significant. So the total increase in revenue was $726,745. And then the same applies below to your expenses, additional salaries and benefits, additional expenses due to categorical carryover. Let me explain this one. That's a significant sum. Government agency budgets are zero-based budgets, we call them. So you start out the year zero to zero with your expenses and your revenues.
Mr. Diaz, can I ask you to use the microphone?
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure we don't lose anything on that.
Okay. This zero, the zero-sum budgeting starts you off zero to zero at the beginning of each year, where you're, if you calculate $50 million worth of revenue and $50 million worth of expenses, you'll be equal. However, if you have in the previous year unspent funds, they would show up on your expenditure side in the next year, so it actually makes you look like you're spending money that you don't have, when that's not exactly the case. You're spending those carryover funds. But it would appear as a deficit where your revenues would be 50 million, and your expenditures could be 55 million. You'd say, why are you spending 5 million more dollars than you have? Well, you're spending the money that you didn't spend from the year before. It sounds complicated. It really isn't as complicated as I'm trying to make it sound. So, but anyway, you had some, you had some categorical carryovers there. We had some rent expenses that we didn't have in the budget, some expenses related to donations, and then some increases in state and federal revenue, again, for the $2,139. And it explains, it explains those changes. Now, our ending fund balance has, as a result of spending these carryovers and these additional expenditures, our ending fund balance has gone down by $1.4 million. This isn't a, I'm not up here tonight to sugarcoat a wonderful budget. I can cut to the accounting speak and all the mumbo jumbo. The district's budget is in a challenged state right now. We simply, in the simplest explanation, is we're spending money providing services over and above the revenues that we're receiving to provide those services across the board. And so I don't know how else, how simpler to put it, but we're spending more than we're taking in, and that doesn't work very well. This is the high school district. Again, we have the budget that started in July, the budget at first interim, and the differences here in the revenue side and the expenditure side. And as we can see, again, the many adjustments, the different things that we didn't know about at the time, or we hadn't budgeted, didn't think we were going to get as much. We were saved quite a bit by mandated costs coming in, the secondary district of $718,000. On the other hand, we had overestimated what we thought the MAU money came in, so we're kind of under on that. And then again, we had a significant increase in local donations. Data processing cost had to be, from the elementary district, wasn't in the original budget. That's part of our data processing cost. That's one area we're looking at in our budget very closely, too, by the way. And then on your expenditure side, we had additional salaries and benefits projections. These were salaries, apparently, that were not budgeted, that were picked up, and that's probably, could be as many as eight teachers or classified, who knows how many that is, but they weren't picked up in the budget process. So I don't know how else to tell you. They weren't accounted for originally. They weren't accounted for originally. There's your category, categorical expenditures, donations again, state and federal revenue, and interest expense not in the original budget. So, they, these numbers are accurate. We sent the draft of this budget to the county office last Tuesday, when it was finished, when it was prepared, and we haven't heard anything back from them, and they've been over there four days analyzing it, so I can sit here with relative, I won't use the word comfort, but relative assuredness that the, the numbers that you're looking at are correct and reflect the condition that the district is in. Now, this is a combination of our, of both districts. And again, you see, we'll just go right to the most important numbers here, the elementary district has a reserve balance of 1.38. The high school district has a reserve balance of 3.0. Now, I hope there's no math teachers here, because these numbers aren't supposed to add across and equal, they're built on different formulas. So your combined reserve for economic uncertainties is 3.07. The way you calculate your reserve for economic uncertainties is you take your total expenditures here, plus your transfers out, which were already included there, and you multiply that times 3%, and that's the number you're supposed to have down here. So, again, we're, we're very tight, we're very tight on our budget, but I'm going to be talking about some things that are going to mitigate those, the situation, because we are not without a plan, and we're not without a strategy to change this. We can't just simply come up to you and say every, every quarterly report, geez, it's getting worse and worse and worse. This is the first one. The second one we'll be delivering to you in late March and April. Not that we can create a lot of money between now and then, but we'll be able to share a strategy, we'll have more of a plan in place on how, what we're going to do to move away from this situation.
Madam President, I can ask a question?
Sure.
I want to make sure I understand this and that the public understands this. When you look at the bottom line, for the elementary district, it shows a 1.38% reserve. The minimum is 3%, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this is the, how many years in a row has the elementary district failed to make 3%?
I don't know that. I, I would ask Dr. Sarves.
I believe this is our third year.
Not the third year, I thought it was, there were two prior years.
Couple, three years.
However, the requirement
No, that's what I wanted to get to.
Is the combined.
That, but the high school district is not below its reserve, in fact, there it shows right on.
Yeah.
The, the one that counts is on the right-hand column, that together, they make 3.07, which is, just clears the reserve requirement. This, this is a, a result of the, of the single district resolution that we passed that allows, this is all in the form of a questioner to check me out on this, that allows us to combine the two districts' budgets for purposes of meeting reserves.
Correct. Ed Code 35110.
Okay. Does it in any way mean that the high school district is subsidizing the elementary district? And could you explain that? I think that's on a lot of people's minds.
No, sir. The, the funds aren't transferred back and forth to subsidize, the budgets are prepared individually, and as you see, the elementary budget is, is not in such good shape, the secondary budget isn't in great shape. But when you take those ending balances, it's just the ending balances that are combined for 35110, that your ending balances can be combined to create your combined reserve.
Or does it not involve a transfer of funds?
No, and if it did, Ed Code 35112 says that the district would have to publish in the local paper any amounts that would be transferred, and that would have to be a public record in the Santa Barbara news press if that ever were to take place. Ed Code 35112 stipulates that a transfer, if there was ever a transfer, there hasn't been, to my knowledge, then that would be a public, published in the newspaper.
Thank you, that's very important, I think, to make that clear.
And I hope we never have to take out that ad, so. There's the combined finances, again, they're, it's, there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of work to do in that area, and I think you'll see later this evening, some of the foundation of those strategies to, to change that. And
Actually, can I ask a question at this point?
Sure.
Going back. Does this include the, we negotiated with the classified staff, does that include that in there, and what happens with the certificated staff?
The classified staff settlement is included in these numbers, the certificated staff settlement is not included in these numbers, because there hasn't been a settlement.
Could you explore with us what that means in terms of?
Well, if we, I, I don't want to get into negotiating up here.
How does the uncertainty get dealt with in this sense?
To come up with, if we were to settle, and I, I'm reluctant to talk about negotiations up here in front of the board on television, because that's such a delicate subject.
No, no, my question is not that, Mr. Diaz, I just simply, this goes to the county, and then they must say that, you know, we understand there's no settlement and
I got what you said, yes. Now, yeah, the county, the county is going to accept this budget that we're presenting them, because we don't have a secondary settlement included into this budget. So we will not be in deficit. When this, when this budget goes to the county, it's going to look just like it does up here on the wall, there'll be nothing to adjust, in fact, they've had this budget now for almost a week. So, at the point in time when the settlement takes place, monies will have to be budgeted for that settlement.
And that, and what, then a supplementary report, or then you submit a comparable report?
Well, we
Which has a different name, right?
Well, it's, it's actually a document, it's called a certification of settlement, I believe, and both the superintendent and myself have to personally sign it to put our guarantee that, yes, the district has the funds to meet the obligations of the settlement and for our future expenditures up to five years out. And that's, that was changed, I think, part of the AB 1200 legislation that really tightened up the financial parameters of school districts. And, you know, now, you have to, to sit down and look at that, you don't think there's enough money there, you shouldn't put your, put your, your name down there, because you incur significant exposure by, by doing it. So, I'm hoping that that's never the case here, so. But there's our combined finances. Again, there's a lot of work to do, but we're, we've already started on the work. 07-08 is not the answer, I just, I just popped this in here, this comes from the school services workshop, and I, not to dwell on the individual numbers, dwell over here on the percentages of this funding's decline. You can see that some of our big, our big programs that we count on a lot, these aren't our numbers, by the way, these are billions, this is 1.7 billion, this is for the state. These numbers are state numbers. But you can just see, the things that concern me are all the negatives over here, minus two, minus three, minus six, minus seven. So the trend, the funds are going to continue to go down next year. And again, here's the categorical funding for next year. Look again over here, one and a half million less, 2 billion less. The state is not going to be in such robust financial circumstances for the few years going out, a few years going forward. The economy's cooling down, soft landing, all of the stuff that everybody's heard, but I don't think that we can anticipate any large influx of tax revenue, personal tax revenues, the, similar to the boon in 2000 that we received because of the exercise of stock options. Essentially, that was driven by the capital gains taxes. I don't see anything like that in our economy right now. So, what I would recommend for us to do, freeze all non-essential general fund expenditures, and that means freeze them, that means stop spending on everything that just isn't absolutely mission critical to the district. Leave vacant position unfilled for the time being, we have positions that are vacant. I would, I would recommend to the board that we leave them vacant for right now. Consider the consolidation or closing an elementary school and leasing it. One of the big issues that I've discovered in working on all of this is that so many of our facilities are underutilized, we have half-empty schools, and we have schools with very small classes, we have schools with classrooms that are not being used for teaching purposes, they evolved into other uses that are maybe non-instructional. All of those things cost money, because the rooms use utilities, they require cleaning, and so it's all of these little things that add up to, to the big, to the big dollars. The mothballing of classrooms, that's just what I was referring to, in the mothballing of classrooms, we'll actually close the classroom off, we'll keep the emergency wiring going for the fire alarm, for the safety, but there'll be no access into that room, it's going to be closed, the custodian then won't have to go in there and clean it, and it won't turn the lights on. So, those things don't sound like much, but when you do it across the district our size, it adds up. And this is probably the most important thing, all of these, many of these elements we're going to discuss later, we have to create a two-year financial turnaround plan that includes all of the above, because it took this district several years to get here, to this position. It didn't happen in six months. It's going to take at least two years to, if everybody's working hard together and cooperating, it'll take us two years, we can turn it, we can turn it around. But it's not going to be easy. And then the last couple of items, this district has been preparing three budgets for many years now, as a result of Ed Code 3510, but Ed Code 3510 doesn't say you have to prepare three budgets, it says you can prepare one budget. And this district has just been preparing three, I wasn't sure why. I, I see the, the tremendous extra work that it puts on staff, and it's not because our staff is not hard workers or afraid to work hard, but what it robs them of is the time to analyze, the time to sit down with the principals and the programs, assistant superintendents, and say, let's look at these expenses, let's look at that. When they're always playing catch-up, you just lose that time to analyze, and you're all educated people, you know that that's the most important part of us, of a turnaround plan, is to find out really what's wrong first, and that takes the analysis. So, hopefully by preparing a single budget, now, that doesn't mean all this is going to be, that you're only going to just see one thing. When we do our budget next year, with, the SACs codes are going to allow us to put identifiers in there for the high school and the elementary school, so we will completely be able to present separate financial statements via the SACs codes for the elementary and the high school. You don't necessarily need to see a separate budget if you can get all that same information with the financial report. So, that's going to streamline operations and begin to improve, improve the analytical work that we need to do for our schools. This last one is, you've heard me talk about this one extensively, this is a SQL database that is a large repository of the financial information, and it's, it populates reports every single night, and literally, we could put the Santa Barbara High School financial data on, in a network folder, and Mr. Turnbull would be able to, via his computer, log on and query his whole financial activity for his school site. And this, I'm not talking fantasy land, because I personally did this for a middle school principal in Rosemead, and took this and installed it on his computer, showed him how to sort and filter his data, he was, you've never seen somebody so thrilled, and in about four months, you watch somebody develop a complete mastery over their budget, just in a short time. So this will help an awful lot. And then the last part, of course, you know, this isn't going to be easy, this, this process is not going to be easy. I was talking to the superintendent, and we were going over an extensive list of things that we have to do, and every one of them requires a behavior change. It's not just like, well, shut all the rooms down in that wing and do this, or do something simple like that. So these are going to require behavior change, and we're going to all have to communicate, cooperate, and collaborate, because this will not be easy. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz, if I could interrupt for just a second, I think the, the record, if you will, should reflect that this discussion, in addition to covering the interim budget item, also includes elements of Agenda Item F1, discussion of possible budget reductions and enhancements, which I understand you may be coming back to again later.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry if I jumped, there, there were some common threads in, in there.
Not at all, I just wanted to, to make it clear on the record.
But we do have a plan, and we're going to start putting it to work.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, you beat me to it. Questions for Mr. Diaz?
Some years ago, we had the financial crisis management team in, did an analysis of our finances, and among the several things that they recommended is that we reconsider our status as a fiscal accountability district, and that's, I didn't know what the hell that meant, quite frankly, until I did a little research and found out that it's rather complicated and, and potentially could save us a lot of money, and it's come before the board two or three times, but nothing, but we've not done anything, I wondered if you could talk about that a little bit.
Actually, could I cut you off, Dr. Noel? That is squarely under item F1. It's in the list on F1, and I'm wondering if we could wait until we get to F1.
No problem, of course.
Is that acceptable? Thanks, Mr. Diaz. Any questions regarding the first interim report?
I, I thought I saw a typo, but I, maybe, I'm not reading correctly, page two of three? Seven rows down in the top table, eight rows, deficit spending. Do I read a double negative in there? Well, it says deficit spending, if any, has not exceeded the standard in any of the current, or two subsequent years, checkbox says no. So, no, it has not.
No.
Which, which would seem to be saying, yes, it has.
No, Dr. Noel, what
Dr. Noel, the, the state SAC software populates these, these sections, what they're looking for is, most school districts, if they have carryover funding, do deficit spend. So deficit spending in and of itself is not an unusual phenomenon, excuse me, excuse me, is not an unusual phenomenon, school budgeting. They set a, a limit, however, on a parameter for this deficit spending, how much is it, and, and so they have limits on that. I, I would read that the district has not met, has not reached those limits. So that's, but you know, this jargon that is used in these reports is arcane at best, so I, it's easily, I could see where that could be misunderstood.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, but I'd like to move to approve the first interim financial report for the Santa Barbara School Districts.
Okay. Second. Second, we have, Ms. Malikoff seconded. Any further questions? This is fairly routine for a school district, our first interim report to be followed by a second interim report. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You look like you regret that.
Well, it's very painful, because that's a lot of stuff we've read since last Friday.
It is what it is, yeah.
Especially, especially since it's all tabular.
Okay, the
And here I thought, here I thought I found the crucial error.
Oh, you hope.
But we encourage you to keep on trying, Dr. Noel.
If Shirley says it's okay, and Ed says it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, so the first interim report is approved, and thank you to Ms. Corpus, and And thank you to Ms. Corpus, and thanks to Ms. Pimentel. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Patty and Shirley.
We are on to Item E2 of the Action Agenda, Approval of the 0607 Consolidated Application for Funding Categorical Aid Programs, Part II for the Santa Barbara Elementary and High School Districts. Mr. Gonzalez.
Good. You saw preliminary information on this in the Board Brief. Mr. Gonzalez is Director of Compliance and Categorical Programs. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. We're obligated to, we're required to send in Part II of the Consolidated Application to the state via electronically by January 31st. The information contained in this document essentially notifies the district of the entitlements that we received in those funds, eight funds altogether, carryovers in those eight funds, and how they were distributed in Title I and in EIA. If you'll take a look at the cover memo and you go to Page 3, in that table at the bottom of Page 3 is a summary of all that data. It lists the entitlement for 0607 in those programs, the carryover from last year, and the total allocation in these categorical programs this year. To summarize it, it indicates $3.1 million will be coming into the elementary district from entitlements and carryover. On the top of Page 4 is a similar summary for the secondary district. And if you add the carryovers as well as the 0607 entitlement, you come up with an allocation of $2.6 million altogether in the eight programs that we apply for through the consolidated application. We're prepared to answer any questions you might have about this document.
Questions from board members? And it's something that we see on a regular basis now. If you want to quickly recap for the public where this falls in the scheme of site plans, the LEAP plan, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. Let me start by sharing with the public that what these monies are designed to do is help us, help assist the students who are not at proficiency in English Language Arts and Mathematics, to assist them in getting in proficiency. That is really the major goal of these programs. Our district has written its plan, what we commonly call the LEAP plan, the Local Educational Agency Plan, that addresses five different areas. How we're going to help students who are not proficient in English Language Arts, how we're going to help students who are not proficient in mathematics, how we're going to help students, our English learners, gain proficiency in the English language, and how we're going to make sure that our campuses are safe and secure environments. That plan sets up the foundation for the directions we give the individual school sites. Then, our elementary schools and our secondary schools are required to put together a single plan for student achievement that uses those goals that the board has established, not only in their mission statements, but also what we've said in what we call the LEAP plan. All of that is put together in the single plans for student achievement that were presented to the board some two months ago, three months ago. And the, one of the functions of the Categorical Department, as well as the two assistant superintendents, is to monitor the implementation of those funds. In addition, Fiscal Services provides internal as well as external auditors that, on a regular basis, come in to make sure that we are in compliance with the utilization of those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful recap. Questions, Dr. Noel?
So we're talking about the other half of the finances of public education, right? First half is the general fund that comes through per head payments from the state, and this is the stuff that, a lot of it's federal, but it's from the state with earmarks.
That is correct. It probably is a misnomer to say the other half, because it indeed does not constitute 50 percent. However, you are correct, with the caveat that these are very restricted monies, i.e. the district, a school site principal cannot use these funds to the broad extent that are permitted by unrestricted general funds.
Got you. Now, last year, you gave us the magic formula of checking line seven against line 16. And this year, there's no line 16.
One of the, thank you, Dr. Noel.
I think I found something to check, but I want to check with you first.
One of the nuances of the consolidated application is that it changes every single year. And so those lines change with it. We are at the beck and call of the State Department of Education in regards to this form.
Right, so, but that check was, there are several, there are several kind of pillars of categorical expenditures, if I understand. Number one is that they're supposed to supplement regular spending, the things that you have to do to run a school, rather than not supplant that. The other, another one is that for some schools, I don't know how many we have anymore, but Santa Barbara High School, it's a targeted assistance school, is it still?
Correct.
At those schools, the money can't be spent for purposes that are not specifically earmarked for eligible students, students who are under the poverty line families.
Correct.
And the third one is that not more than 15 percent may be spent for administrative, for non-direct services to students.
Correct.
And that was what line seven and 16 was about. I look here, and I find line seven, which, on both the high school and the elementary, which is the total approved allocation, and then I find the reservations, the money you can pull back before it goes, and I find that you are well under the 15 percent, if I'm making that calculation correct.
That is correct.
For both districts.
Well, let me go specifically, let's go to Page 24.
That's right.
And Page 24 actually refers to the subject that Dr. Noel has brought up for the elementary district. And specifically, I would direct your attention to line eight, reserved for indirect costs, and line nine, reserved for administration. If you added both of those figures, you would find that we get very close to the 15 percent. One of the documents that we did not produce for you tonight, that we can make available to you, is on an annual basis, the state changes the indirect costs and the administrative costs that are permissible. And we can make that form available. You can guess that it is now more restrictive this year than it was last year.
Well, I'm paying you all a compliment, because some years ago, we didn't have that kind of control. And I think it's very important to make sure these dollars go to provide direct services to students to maximum extent possible. And you're, it looks to me like in both districts, you've met that target and with something to spare. And I just wanted to compliment you all on that, and I have no criticism this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other questions from the board? It is fairly self-evident, and a routine occurrence for the board to be seeing this. Is there a motion to approve the consolidated application?
Yes, I would move to approve.
Second.
I'd like to add a comment.
I was going to say, it sounds like there's something else coming. Go ahead.
Also, another thing that I think is really commendable, if my recollection is that we really don't have to make this vote, that a vote to approve the first part way back in June would have covered this. But that this is just a move toward being more explicit, focusing our attention on what we're doing and on the public's attention on it. And I think that is also a very important step forward. And I want, and I know just from keeping my ear to the ground, that there's a lot more care being, more attention being paid to making sure that targeted assistance money is going to help the kids for whom it was intended.
So a motion from Dr. Noel and a second from Ms. Malikoff to approve the 0607 Consolidated Application for Funding Categorical Aid Programs, obviously Part II for the Santa Barbara Elementary and High School Districts. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? It passes for zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E3, Approval of Recommendations to the Board Regarding Expulsion Due Process Procedures, Expulsion Hearing Procedures, Expulsion Appeal Procedures, and Stipulated Agreements.
Well, we're going to invite Michael Gonzalez back to the podium. We've been discussing various issues about the expulsion procedures and appeal procedures for the last year. And based on previous board discussions and direction, Michael has distilled a list of what he believes are directions from the board, and would like to take those up with you at this point in time.
Thank you very much. In the eight conversations that we've had, including a public hearing on this matter, what we've done is we've summarized what we believe perhaps are items regarding the expulsion process that the board may be agreement with. Should the board agree to these recommendations, we would then begin the modifications of our administrative regulation on expulsions and bring that back to you. I do want to share with you that several attorneys that were present at that hearing in December have said, will we have an opportunity to make comment regarding the administrative regulation? And I've shared with them that it is the board's opinion that indeed they should have an opportunity to take a look at them. So we divide the recommendations in four areas. The first area is expulsion due process procedures. We believe that your recommendations, your conversations lead us to believe that you would like us to continue to clarify and simplify, simplify the language that we use in all our correspondence to parents to minimize that technical language that sometimes accompanies these documents. We also believe that you are interested in making sure that the parental rights portion, for example, the one that talks about the right to appear before an administrative hearing panel, their right to have legal, be represented by legal counsel or other representatives, that we include, that we highlight, bold that information on the letters. Attached to that is that we include legal services. I will share with you that, I'm not clear about that yet. You may recall in December, our attorney from Libert Cassidy said that he was very safe in recommending that we include in the list things like attorney legal, attorney legal referral services, a well-known documented, but he was hesitant about private entities. I would only share with you that my experiences, for example, with the Santa Barbara Teen Legal Clinic that has represented a number of students, lead me to believe that I would ask you to consider the inclusion of that firm in any kind of document that we send out to parents for possible legal assistance. We're also very clear that the board wants us to make sure that students are in some kind of instructional setting during the expulsion process. And you know that since last year, I don't think you've received reports from students who weren't receiving those services. The staff has done a fine job with that. I do put in that proviso, that caveat that started all this off, that I do advise you not to conduct hearings in closed session, as we're doing. However, I'll speak to that issue in just a bit. Under expulsion hearing procedures, we are recommending that you continue to permit the administrative hearing panel to hear the expulsion cases, that we continue the practice of removing from the administrative hearing panel any administrator who might not be able to render a fair and impartial judgment based on the previous experiences of working with the youngster or the family. We are also, I believe, that you are directing us to continue to limit the membership on the administrative hearing panel to Santa Barbara School District administrators. You may recall that there was a recommendation from some folks about including private school administrators on the panel. And finally, that we continue the practice at your direction of limiting membership on the administrative hearing panel to assistant principals and to a retired administrator, the former assistant superintendent of secondary education. Next page, please. Regarding the expulsion appeal procedure, what I'm sharing with you, though I have very clearly stated, and counsel for the district has stated, that we do not believe that it is appropriate to conduct hearings. We nevertheless understand that the board would like the ability to conduct hearings to that effect. We would like to revise our ARs in such a way that we do notify parents of their right to request a hearing with the board in expulsion matter, that the board would determine if the request would be honored, that if the board chose to hold what we'll call a supplemental hearing, that the hearing should include school officials from the school that's recommending the expulsion. And then we include it, just to make sure that folks understand that there is already an appeals process built in by law into the expulsion process. A parent has a right to appeal a decision to the County Board of Education within 30 days. However, I want to be very clear that what the Board of Education actually checks is due process violations. They do not weigh the merits of the case, and that's an important distinction. Finally, recommendations stipulated agreements. We would like the board to approve staff to implement stipulated agreements when all the parties agree to it, that we ensure that parents and students are aware and understand the rights waived in a stipulated agreement. I'm not sure it's clearly understood what these rights are that parents waive in a stipulated agreement. But it's actually quite simple. What they come down to is a parent would waive the right to request another hearing before the board. They would also waive the right to request a hearing with the County Board of Education. That is to say, a stipulated agreement would be a final kind of agreement between the parent, the student, and the district. Those are the only rights that are actually waived by a stipulated agreement.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes?
I wanted, I'm pleased that you said that so clearly, because I had been troubled with the, how do you reconcile our policy on stipulated agreements with the part of the Ed Code that guarantees the right of appeal to the county? And I don't know the legal implications of that, but it seemed to me that that was a problem.
Yes, it could be. But again, what we're talking about is all the parties agreeing to that. And there's been case law that supports a district's right, and a parent's right, to enter into stipulated agreements that does waive that right. My experiences over the last three years are that a parent who, I recall one case last year where a parent initially indicated, yes, I'll agree to stipulated agreement. Why? Because it's going to cut down on the amount of time as we go through the expulsion process. The document was translated, and when the parent read the translation, the parent was appalled and said, "I'm not going to do this. I want to reassure the board that what we did is we honored his refusal to sign the stipulated agreement, and we went into an administrative hearing." This is never a coerced situation. This is going into the signing with open eyes and a very clear understanding of what will happen.
Had that been signed yet?
No, it had not been signed. We would never, we gave them the translated copy, gave them additional time to read it. gave them additional time to read it. When they were through reading it, they said, we're not going to sign this. All right. Finally, we would encourage parents to consult with an attorney, any of those attorneys that we choose to list on there, that before they sign a stipulated agreement, if they're not sure about it, that they're to consult with an attorney to make sure that they have a clear understanding of their rights, what those documents are admitting to, and what the consequences are once you've signed on the dotted line. These are the recommendations that we believe are in keeping with what the board has discussed over the last eight meetings. Again, should you accept these recommendations, then we then go to work on rewriting the administrative regulation to reflect your wishes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gonzalez. You've distilled a lot of discussion in a, in a very coherent fashion. Board members, shall we just go section by section to, if you have any questions or comments? Any questions or comments on the first section, expulsion due process procedures or issues? Oh, procedures issues, I'm sorry. Any questions regarding that? No, I'm not? Okay. On the expulsion hearing procedures issues, questions or comments on that section?
Yeah, I just, the very first one, parents are to be notified that they can request a hearing?
That's, that's the next, we're talking about the section immediately preceding that. Any questions on those two sections?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Okay, fine. Then, I don't, Ms. Parker on that second section? I can't see you.
No.
Okay. Expulsion appeal procedure issues. Dr. Noel?
I just wanted to know if that was a notification in writing or oral?
All notifications are in written by certified mail and regular mail. And then we've begun a practice for many of the cases, not all, of making verbal contact by telephone or in a person-to-person conference to make sure parents understand the process.
And that would be specified in the administrative regulations?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
My question on that is, as you're doing, as you're updating the administrative regulations and working on these new notification forms, would, would your notifications come to us as an exhibit as part of this, so that we could look at what you're doing there?
Of course.
Would the parent need to provide a reason for a supplementary hearing, or just ask for one?
We, in, probably about two meetings ago, we drafted, actually, counsel drafted a procedure that essentially said, I would like a hearing, and I think it would be appropriate for, for a parent to state the reason for the hearing. And if that's what you wanted in that request, we would certainly include that kind of language.
So, they would request it, and we would then, the, the board would meet in closed session to decide whether to honor that request or not?
That's correct.
Is that correct? And so that there would be another, then another two weeks or, it wouldn't happen then, it would happen?
At a subsequent meeting.
A subsequent meeting, so that you get all the parties together, is that right?
Correct.
Because these hearings are going to be very different from the hearings that we do now. And I'm assuming that they will take more time because it will be both sides being represented in a supplemental hearing.
Matter of fact, timing-wise, it may not be something that, given that there has to be administrators there and so forth, it may be something that needs to be done during working, or, or does it? Does it, is, is there a usual time for these things that makes sense?
We have not yet crossed that bridge. We've not had discussions with our administrators about these policies until, about these proposed recommendations, until the board gives us the go-ahead. But it's conceivable that these hearings will require more time.
Maybe you could give us some idea of what a typical expulsion hearing runs time-wise?
Oh, usually now they run about 15 to 20 minutes, but it's, it's one side of the dispute, if you will.
But I mean, the original expulsion hearing, which might be a better indicator.
And the administrative hearing panel?
I'm sorry, you mean the administrative?
I mean, in the administrative hearing panel.
Thank you, okay.
The, the administrative hearing panels, depending on, on things like the need for translation services, are roughly about one hour. When we, when we have, when we require translation services, it's not unusual for the cases to go about an hour, hour and 20 minutes. It's also contingent on the number of witnesses that the school or the student is bringing forth, but rough estimate is about an hour. That'd be a fair statement to make.
Well, and I don't, I'm going to make the assumption that a supplemental hearing would be a rare occurrence, but I don't know that it would be as frequent as, you know, the, the number of hearings that we have right now.
And, and is it meant to go as in-depth as a regular administrative hearing panel? Or is it more of a synopsis?
We, we are in new territory here.
It's supposed to, theoretically, it's, it's to, not to look at issues of fact.
That's correct.
That's, that was what the administrative panel did. It's to then look at the broad issues of policy and law.
And mitigating circumstances, if you will.
Yeah.
If you'll permit me, it's just, it was drawn to my attention how we defined a supplemental hearing previously, if you would like to hear those words. It states, when a suppli, well, if we can put this up. Thank you. It states, when a supplemental hearing is requested, the board will consider the request at the time which it is scheduled for the, thank you. I'm reading the last paragraph. At the time which is scheduled for the board to take action on the expulsion recommendation, and will determine in its sole discretion whether to grant or deny a supplemental hearing. A decision of the board to order supplemental hearing may limit the scope and time for the hearings and condition the granting of the hearing upon the agreement of the pupil and parent or guardian to waive any time requirements that may be applicable. In addition, in lieu of conducting the supplemental hearing itself, the board may order that the supplemental proceedings be conducted by the administrative hearing panel.
Ms. Malikoff?
Can we go back for a second to the other line there about the last piece of paper? The expulsion appeal procedures. Can we also include in there that parents could, it says, yeah, or to be notified, sorry, is this the second page?
Yeah.
Yes.
That they could also provide something written. I don't see anything wrong with a parent wanting to provide the board with some additional written material. Is that, would that be allowed?
Actually, that's existing, that's existing regulations right now. As you know, it's not unusual for parents in closed session to present additional documents to the board. I do want to share with you, however, is my reservations and district council's reservations about that, in that the school has not, not had an opportunity to review those documents. And so that's where we enter that area where I've cautioned the board about holding those supplemental hearings. But certainly, we would write in language, as we have currently, that would permit such documentation to be submitted. Sure.
Ms. Parker?
It looks to me like our existing regulations are actually not that dissimilar from what we're proposing, that we actually haven't been following our own practice. Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct, up to the point of stipulated agreements. As you review the administrative regulation, there's no mention of stipulated agreements, but by and large, you are correct.
Okay.
Okay? There's also not mention of things specific like the membership of the administrative hearing. It doesn't spell out who the membership is, but those are minor points, though.
I was just going to add, excuse me, Madam President, that what you see on the screen there is one of the proposed new administrative procedures that were brought to the board, I think, last October. Actually, the existing administrative procedure is quite different. And in fact, the underlining reflects the additions.
Okay.
The existing procedure calls for the board to meet with the pupils in closed session on a regular basis.
Okay, so we are following our current?
Any other board questions or comments on that, on that particular section, expulsion appeal procedures issues? Sounds like that was the big issue. And then the net, final section is stipulated agreements issues. Questions there? I believe Mr. Gonzalez accurately has captured the concerns that we had. Well, before we go further, we have one public comment.
Mr. John Greer, from the Teen Legal Clinic.
My name is, my name is John Greer, and I've been asked to represent the Teen Legal Clinic here this evening. I'm also a past chair of the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission. I want to start by thanking the board for taking the time over the past year, and especially their special session in December, to consider this policy as it is a very high impact on, on, albeit a few numbers of students, a very high impact to their life. And I also want to thank the staff, especially Mr. Gonzalez, for, you know, communicating and working with us. As he indicated, I had contacted him and asked whether or not these recommendations were going to be actually incorporated in the administrative regulation, because words do mean something. And so we'd like to see how those words are actually poised before we, we comment. In general, the, I, I think he has captured, you know, much of the discussion. I think the, the last point that he was making on the final decision by the board, we do have some concerns in, in the way it is currently written, just in, in terms of clarifying. And especially, it appears that it will be brought to the board, and they'll make a decision whether or not they want to hear it first. I'm assuming they're not going to hear it at that particular point in time, because we wouldn't, the student would not be able to prepare anything to present, which should be presented in advance, and anything else that the, the school district's going to present should be presented in advance. Our other concern, which, which also is in this doc, the document that Mr. Gonzalez referred to, was that the board would have the right to not hear that and refer it back to an administrative hearing panel. Is that the same administrative hearing panel that recommended it to come to the board in the first place? And again, I think that there, there are issues that the administrative hearing panel that we've, we mentioned before specifically sticks with, with facts, and there, and there can be mitigating circumstances that can be presented to the board that the board can choose to accept or deny as they, as, as they choose. And I think that's the reason the ed code allows, you know, and, and it is specifically the board, board's purview to expel a student, albeit they can certainly delegate portions of that, you know, duty.
Mr. Greer, I just want to stop you there for one second. I appreciate you coming. And you raised a couple of, of questions. And one, I want to clarify, in terms of mitigating circumstances, very often, the administrative hearing panel does hear that kind of information and take it into consideration. So I think it occurs on, on both levels, at the administrative hearing panel and at the, the board hearing.
They, they can, but, but I think an administrative hearing panel is, is what it is. The board is what it is, and the board has a, a larger purview than the administrative hearing panel.
Well, okay.
I would believe. Okay. That's just my opinion. Okay. So, that, you know, so we'll reserve our comments. My understanding is it's going to be in late February or early March.
Right. We'll, we'll deal with these particular recommendations tonight, and then we'll actually see them in the administrative regs themselves, and those will come back.
And that's what will be the final approval, is my understanding. This is not the final approval of the administrative regulation.
No, no.
Okay. And, and hopefully, we'll have those comments in a sufficient period of time that we can comment.
This, this indicates an intent, and that would be the actual rules.
Right. Because we'd like to have it enough so that we can actually provide written comments
Okay.
to Mr. Gonzalez and, you know, continue the dialogue that we've, we've developed at this point.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you. No, we appreciate it.
Thank you again. All right. Bye-bye.
Okay.
One comment on the, are we, talk about stipulated agreements?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
I just, I'm, I've been very uncomfortable with this because of the waiver of rights, which I'm uncomfortable, uncomfortable about. I, the scenario that concerns me is that someone signs it, and then wakes up the next morning and says, oh my God, what have I done? So I'm, this is kind of a simplistic idea, but it may, may work. Would it be possible to have a delay before, kind of an automatic delay? You sign it today, and, and it goes into effect in a week?
That can be done, but I will share with you, yes, it can be done, but I will also share with you that a stipulated agreement that's not worked out by lawyers is always given to a parent, and the parent takes it home. And I think it's been the practice that we've given them at least a week to review that document. I cited earlier that parent who, when they read the translated copy, said, I'm not going to sign this, no problem. Then we go to the administrative hearing. So we could codify a, a time, but I want to assure the board and the public that it is never sit down and read and sign.
Well, I, I like the way you just put it. Needn't be after the, my last suggestion is, is that needn't be that after you've signed it, but I like that. I would like to see us codify a period for reflection.
We can do that.
Thanks, Mr. Gonzalez. Well, does the board wish to vote approving these recommendations, and then wait until we see the administrative regs? Would you all rather just wait to see the administrative regulations?
Does it matter?
I don't think it makes.
We always talk about giving direction to staff.
Do you want a voted direction?
Or staff having taken direction from the conversation.
Staff would appreciate a very clear indication from you folks that, yes, you're to proceed and incorporate these recommendations into our administrative regulation.
I would actually feel better about it, because then when we see the administrative regulations and we see what our recommendations were, we can indicate either it does or does not reflect the intent of the recommendations. So if somebody would humor me and make a motion?
I'll move to approve these recommendations to the board regarding the expulsion due process procedures with
Expulsion procedures?
Sorry.
Expulsion, appeal procedures?
Procedures, expulsion.
Stipulated agreements, okay.
Exactly, with Dr. Noel's modification.
Okay. That was to the stipulated agreement, that there be a waiting period in, in advance of a parent having to sign a stipulated agreement. Okay, is there a second? Oh, thank you. Dr. Noel seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes four zero, and we will see the administrative regs at some point in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And now we will take, it says a 15-minute break, a 10- or 15-minute break. Is that where we are? Yes. Okay. Last meeting, I, I was voted the negotiator, because Dr. Sarvis is considered an unrepresented employee, so I was the negotiator for the contract, and the board approved the contract in closed session. We reported the vote out. Dr. Sarvis has agreed to the terms of the contract, and so now we are submitting it for a public vote. Is there any discussion? Okay, pretty pro forma stuff. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the contr, or, is it, we accept?
A one-year extension.
A one-year extension to the contract.
A second, is there a second? Second. So Ms. Malikoff made the motion, and Ms. Parker seconded. All those, okay, all those approving, ratification of superintendent's contract for one-year extension, including an annual step, step increase, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, got, you know.
Break time, back to another break.
Kind of. You gave me, gave me too long of a coffee break. Board action on student expulsion case numbers 06, 07 dash 08, 30, 31, and 32. Board action on student expulsion case numbers 06, 07 dash 08, 30, 31, and 32.
In the case of 06, 07 dash 08, I move that we rehold the administrative hearing panel for this student.
Second, that we return the case to the administrative, for an administrative hearing?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a second from Ms. Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It passes unanimously. Go ahead.
In the case of 06, 07 dash 32, I pulled, moved to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
In the case of 06 slash 07 dash 31.
Wait, hang on one second, Dr. Noel, that was a four oh vote, there were no nays in there.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, go ahead.
Case of 06 slash 07 dash 31, I move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second by Ms. Malikoff. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That's four zero. And the final case?
Go for it.
Go ahead.
In the case of 06, 07 slash 07 dash 30, I move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel, which is to suspend the expulsion.
All, all those, thank you, Dr. Noel, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we are done with this. Now we are on to our conference agenda. And the first item is a discussion of possible budget reductions. I'm sorry, I don't have my mic on. Item F1, discussion of possible budget reductions and enhancements.
So we're going to ask Ed Diaz, our assistant superintendent of Business Services, to return to the podium to give the board some ideas and engage the board in some discussion about possible budget enhancements and budget reductions.
Okay, excuse me. When I was, first came on board in November, the superintendent in the very first week began discussing the need for a fiscal solvency analysis of the elementary district. And at that time I began a draft of items that I could see and had experienced in my past business career and also solicited comments from staff. We sent, I, I drew up an outline and I sent it to just about everybody in the district, the assistant superintendents, the bargaining units who, the classified president commented. Many teachers individually contacted me and added some things to the list. So I prepared this list, I didn't leave anybody's recommendation off. And then I organized it into a, a less burdensome document. And for, for the board tonight, we included an attachment that summarized some of the main areas of those recommendations into tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier one being those items that I think we can do immediately, and I mean immediately. And those are, as you've aforementioned, just freeze all non-essential unrestricted general fund expenditures. Do not fill budgeted but vacant positions. Review all site level hiring for budget impact before hiring. That's not, our personnel, personnel and position control and budget have not been working together in, in the most productive way to maximize those processes. One of the other things that's also on that list is, hasn't been put on there, but certainly should. It's a not, it's not a large thing, but it's a, it's going to add up to a lot of money. The district spends a lot of money on individual printers for people. Everybody seems to have their own little printer with their ink cartridges at each desk. And I think it's time for us to take a hard look at whether or not we want to keep purchasing those. They're expensive to maintain. The cartridges cost a lot, almost as much as the printers do. And I was interested to read in my financial press, I follow that financial press quite a bit, that the bulk of the earnings from the Hewlett Packard Company doesn't come from all of the computers and all of the stuff they sell, it comes from the cartridges. So that's where they make all their money is in the cartridges and they make a pretty good chunk of it off of us. So we'd like to get out of the printer business if possible. Tier two are actions that we can take within the next 90 days. And some of this has already begun. We can work with our school sites to develop, monitor, and maximize MAF funding. There's an initiative taking place as we speak at the sites to generate more interest among staff to identify MAF reimbursable activities and participate in them. Although the money takes a while to get here, it does get here. It does get here and it goes into the general fund. And I think if we can keep that in the forefront of our staff's awareness, then they'll get, get more involved and we'll develop, we'll develop some more MAF, MAF funding. The next item, of course, we have to, these are negotiated items, so we have to develop some language, contract language for some attendance incentives. Improving the attendance in the district could be a very large item. Following this page are some more detail of these, of these different items. I have more detail of these, these are just the broad pictures of them. But a 1% increase in average daily attendance for this district would, would result in about $250,000 unrestricted general fund money. So those are significant amounts. And again, we.
That's in the elementary.
That's in the elementary budget, yes, excuse me. That was in the elementary budget. The aforementioned, you heard me, mothball unused classrooms. We'll be assigning dollar values, we're going to come up with numbers for all of these. So some of them are hard to gauge, some of them are, are easier than others. But we want to put dollars behind all these things to see what we add up. You know, begin discussion on eventual school closures due to declining enrollment. And the public and the board should be clear that we don't have our eye on any school right today to close by the, the end of the school year or have it close at the beginning of the next year. It's just a timely process and it wouldn't be prudent to try and force that into such a short timeframe. But it is, however, time for the board to seriously consider the sizes of your schools. When does it become necessary to consolidate a school? Are there lease revenues, significant lease revenues out there for the school district to accrete, accrete to their budget by, by these lease revenues? So there's some certain business considerations that need to be discussed. Also, with our existing charter schools, I'm not so sure that we have a level playing field with regard to rental, rental of those facilities. I know some schools are paying something, other schools are paying something else. And I think we need to look at all of that and bring everybody up to a, a level that's consistent with our finances and fair and reasonable to those, to the schools as well. And that not only includes rent, but there's other services too. We, as we sit down with the charters to discuss their MOUs, we, we seem to learn something new with regards to, when I say something new, something's different than we're doing at another charter school. And so I think we need to round those services up and so that we have standards that are fair throughout the district. The tier three items are really items that we can focus on for the next budget year. And again, implementing a common start date at both districts, I don't know how much that would save us, but it would, I'm sure that will save us some money. Implement a single budget per ED code 35110, you heard me allude to that in the budget presentation. I know that will trim the cost of your accounting administration back there. Not so, and cost is, is not the consideration back there so much as the lack of ability to perform those specialized accounting services, those analysis services, those kind of working, working to, working with your site staff and your assistant superintendents to help them manage their money the very best instead of always playing catch-up. So that would, I certainly think will yield, yield some good results. Implementing an attendance increase bonus program. There's many different facets to this. But essentially it, it, it involves the, an educational community at the school, putting attendance as a big focus item. And all of us, attendance is important to everybody and, and you get that attendance up a couple of notches, you're going to have a lot more money flowing into the school. And, and only, it's only right that the district would work with the sites and pass some of those funds back to them directly for those, for those, for those efforts. Reduce costs for small, small schools to lower operating costs. What that refers to is we have schools of various sizes throughout the district. However, if they're small or medium or large, many of them have the same size staffs. And so we would have to go in there and look at those ratios of employees to students and make sure that we were, that we had some type of a reasonable standard across the district that reflected the enrollment, student enrollment to administrative staff. And that again, that's just a, those, these are common practices that every district looks to do. Again, lease unused school facilities. We spoke earlier about schools that are half-empty, schools that are very small in enrollment, about if those were to close or those facilities become available. There are many attractive tenants here in the city of Santa Barbara who consider our facilities very desirable for, for their uses, specifically Antioch University, a lot of the colleges and different, different commercial groups. And they'll pay top dollar rent here in Santa Barbara, it could be a significant amount, up, up towards a half a million or more to the general fund in, in any type of a lease revenue situation. And with regards to fiscal accountability and return to the Santa Barbara County Education Office for their fiscal and business services, you know, I didn't know what fiscal accountability was until I went and started digging around in the office there and discovered that this took place back in 1985 by one of the brilliant predecessor of mine here that was named Mary Gleason. I don't know Mrs. Gleason, but I've read all this. It's amazing when you go into an office how all of this stuff is still there. And it, it's just, there's stacks and stacks of it. But it's very interesting to read through it because you see how, how this happened. And we went to fiscal accountability back in 1985. As a result, I think there were some processing problems with the county office's software in those days. It hadn't evolved to the sophisticated state it is now. The, the district was doing some processing with the city college. And so we had our stuff kind of all around town. And then the, the problems took place between the district and the county office with regards to some processing. The board and the superintendent and CBO at that time decided that it would be better for, for the Santa Barbara School District to withdraw and become fiscally accountable and provide their own services. Well, it's, that's a hard one for me to feel good about because I know it's costing us a lot of money. And I'm, I'm going to have some specific figures besides just the words "a lot of money" for you here very soon. One of the items that we showed you on the budget presentation on one of the explanation items for the differences was the number 175,000 for processing services. So that's just the one number for the finance system that we're paying with the CECC. I don't know how much other money is involved there too because we're paying some staff to maintain that system. So that number could easily get up to a couple hundred thousand. Whereas in, in, to simpl, oversimplify it, if you were to return to the county education office, which you would forego, their fee essentially is the interest on your payroll clearing account. In other words, the district keeps a million or $2 million in a payroll clearing account at the county. It earns interest, the county keeps that interest as their fee for doing your, providing you with all those services. And so, and again, that was a contentious item back in 85, what you're keeping my fees, you know, so. But things have changed, that's 21 years, 21 years ago. And certainly the county system has, it's not perfect, but it is, has evolved into a very highly efficient model. They have what I refer to, we've seen it, web reports where you have the SQL database with all the transactions in it that people can search and query. And so that's something I'm, that's a very hot item for us in accounting because there's some good people back there and it just, it really bothers me that we're, that we're just beating them over the head with such archaic processes. I've just never seen these in 30 years of accounting. Some of the stuff that I see here, I didn't know they did that anymore, but we do and we are going to change. We're going to move, we're going to move past those things. The last item, consider the reduction of staff ratios for auxiliary services. No, this takes in a lot of, a lot of areas. One that comes to mind right off the bat, and it's really not an auxiliary service, but probably should be a separate item. We're wondering if the class size reduction in the ninth grade is really working for us. And that's not something that anybody seems to be comfortable, that it's paying for itself. We don't know to what extent it is working and staying within the funds that it receives to operate that program. That's an area we're going to be looking at very closely. And bringing the board recommendations with those findings as to what, what we come up with. We may not like what we, what we find there. And let's see, going on to the next one. Now, the next page sort of gets into more of that outline that I had started. And again, I've, I've sort of organized this thing by areas. Systems, consolidating the accounting processes, we've spent time on that. Cost benefit between our financial systems, fiscal accountability, the user-friendly financial system. Develop the skilled folks that can do these duties in a timely manner. I can't emphasize enough, and I'm not here lobbying for increased headcount back in accounting, but I can't emphasize enough to you the importance that it makes in a district when you have a financial staff that is able, with the use of technology and the tools available to them with the accounting system, to just instantly provide to that principal, that program person, the, the budget information that they need without taking so much time and having to download through this and put it in Excel. And it just, it just takes too much time. So that makes a big difference. You, what you do then is you create a, you kind of create a monster, but it's a great monster to have. You create a very highly skilled educational staff with regards to their budget. And I've seen that work, if you want to control a budget, you teach your principals and your teachers and your assistant supes how to manage their money. Your budget comes into shape quickly. The second item there, position control, touched on this a little bit earlier. But you know, who is working on what and what funds are they being paid from? That's a simple question to ask, that's a very complicated answer you receive. So we certainly have a long way to go with regards to the budget office, the personnel department, and the position control working much better together. I think there's some, a lot of upside there. Ensuring the timely reporting of hours, control extra duty assignments, consultants and contracted services, not used until approved by the board, track substitute use and cost of using teachers during prep period of substitutes. These, by the way, came from teacher. These, by the way, came from teachers. That the, um, this item, the track substitute use, came from a teacher. The, uh, teacher language came from a principal. Um, I can almost go through these, these different, uh, these didn't all come from me. These came from a lot of the, these people that contributed. And then again, attendance, maximize our, our ADA, get that up, uh, develop of SARB. And I would highly suggest visiting Rose Avenue School in Oxnard School District. They, they have a magnificent attendance model there that I've never seen before. Revenue enhancement and cost, again, the MAU program, uh, the site of all consumables, getting into charter schools, what's their role in the future, director local-funded, uh, MOUs, cost identification, transfers, impact on basic aid, basic aid itself. We'll be having a presentation next week on basic aid in more depth. But these are just some of the areas that we're going to be digging in deeper to actually assign numbers to. I'll just put up, this quickly was the, uh, projection from school services for the next few years out for their COLA, and you can see that, that they, these years out here, those numbers are not looking very big. So, uh, we can't count on waiting till tomorrow for that, uh, for things to come, come around for us. And again, these are the different revenue limits that, uh, that they were put on their dartboard. Immediate actions, again, we have to make tough decisions, we have to build a budget, implement our lookup software, freeze the general fund, and work together. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Diaz. I just, I have a couple of, uh, quick questions for, for you or for the superintendent. But under the tier one, the immediate actions, um, it says, uh, one of the suggestions is do not fill budgeted but vacant positions. How many, how many positions does that involve? Just ballpark, I don't.
I don't know how many positions right now.
We, I don't know how many, but that's not going to be a hard one to, to come up with, because, because those numbers are sitting in the, uh, position control, so we should be able to match those up. And what those are, are budget, are positions that were budgeted, um, during the budget development process, but the people haven't been, I can give you one example of our former, uh, we had a technology director here, I don't know the gentleman's name, uh, but his position hasn't been filled.
His position is being flown and it's just closing.
Yeah, but we're going to just hold up on it for a while.
Well, I don't think we can survive with only two people in technology instead of the director and three, three techs.
But those are the kind of tough decisions that you'll have to be making.
We'll have this discussion tomorrow in cabinet.
Yeah.
You answered my fiscal accountability question, um, but thank you. It's, it's a good list. Thank you. Board, board questions, comments? Ms. Parker?
Yes, I have some, uh, questions. I mean, this is just a. Sorry, this is just a discussion item at this point. But for the tier one, um, that's something, if you, if you did decide to freeze all non-essential unrestricted, you know, general fund expenditures, would that come back to the board for us to freeze it, or is that something that gets decided by, um, district staff?
Would there be a list, a list of items? Excuse me.
Yes, there would be a list of items presented to the board.
Um, so, when you're talking about immediate, presumably within the next few weeks, we will, we will be getting a list of the vacant positions that you're proposing to freeze, um, the, uh, the non-essential, non-essential, but everybody has a different idea of what non-essential means.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Noel, questions?
Yeah. Begin discussion on eventual school closure due to declining enrollment. Do you have a timeline on that? You have under 90 days.
Well, that would be for the discussions to begin, Dr. Noel.
So that would not be effective next year then?
No, sir. Uh, that, that is a.
That would not be effective for 2007, 2008?
That would be effective 2008, 2009.
All right, thank you.
At the earliest. In fact, that process of being identified as charged in the facilities master plan update. So, we're taking care of some other things right now, like the Lacumbra Community Academy, Academy housing, but, um, Pat Saley will be bringing back the procedures to go through that process.
Uh, and you, you said 170,000 potential savings, uh, by going off fiscal accountability?
That's just what it looks like at first pass with, with the numbers that I've seen so far. I don't think I've identified.
That's what we pay that consortium in San Bernardino.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, because I, I thought I remembered some numbers right in the 200,000 range, but.
It's, the 175 was just the one single number I was able to identify. There are more there.
Yeah. Uh, and, and where's the interest on the, where's that interest going now? The interest that the county.
It's coming into our book somewhere. I'm sure Bob can show it to you where, where it is.
Uh, the, uh, there's some program evaluat-, I, I'm, I'm a great champion of program evaluations, and, uh, and, uh, some of the programs that we pay extra money for, I think, well, might we, uh, want to look at critically and see, try to make some kind of a cost-effectiveness assessment. I, are we, is, is corrective reading still one of them? Do we, do we, are we, do we have lesser class size in corrective reading, uh, therefore raising the cost of?
Class size reduction in corrective reading?
Uh, at the secondary district, we no longer have corrective reading except in special ed classrooms.
Okay.
Uh, we have High Point, and that falls under the current contract class size language.
Ah, okay. Let's hold on.
Uh, well, it's a exciting, actually, list. Um, I, I do want to start with, um, also ask a question, as Ms. Harder did, about the, um, vacant positions right now, and just wondering, there's a administrative ratio or something that, um, each district has, and do you happen to know where we fall on that, or in terms of administrative, um, positions?
No, I don't, Mrs. Malikoff, but I could find that out.
Because there's like a state average, if I remember something along those lines, and where we would.
Yeah, in fact, that used to be a required report. It's, to, to my knowledge, it's no longer required, and the only problem with it not being required is that we may not know what the state average is now, uh, but we could certainly calculated it for ourselves.
Think you can, Ed, uh, Ed Data has some relevant data that might make it pretty easy.
Very good.
At the district level, financial data.
I'm assuming a lot of these vacant positions are administrative, because.
Well, there are a variety. They're classified, and there's some administrative, some classified, they're, they're across the board.
Actually, if I can piggyback on that, if, if, uh, that, I had another follow-up question to the fiscal accountability question, but also these vacant positions. Um, some of it, I mean, even if we decided, yeah, we want to, uh, create some savings there, would have to be negotiated, correct?
Some of them would, yes. Could be, some of them could be, yes.
Well, your list is much broader than, for example, we got a list, uh, as, um, Mary Stark was leaving us, she gave us a list which, um, had things on it more programmatic, and these are, are bigger things, um, and which is good to see because a lot of the programs, and we were on the top of this list, for example, the first thing happened to be, um, elementary music, um, which isn't really on here.
No.
Um, and it was a, a savings of 192,000, which really doesn't amount to very much. It, um, and as difficult it is to, to let a program that's so wonderful let it go, it doesn't even get us very much, and I'm hoping that, that a lot of these seem to be much bigger ticket items.
And they're further away from the classroom.
Excellent. That's, um, makes it feel better. Um, I hope we, we can get through this list and find some real money.
There's a lot of money on this list.
To that, okay.
I, I want, I certainly want to under, underscore what, um, Dr. Malikoff just said. It is so refreshing, it relieves so much tension to see a list that is far from the classroom compared to, uh, this one, which was just pain and suffering all over the place, and, uh, I hope you, I hope you do really well in getting those numbers.
Well, not, not to take too much credit for, for this list as compared to that list. That list has, uh, we would call low-hanging fruit on it. There's things there that'd just be easy to identify and, and wouldn't take a lot of, of behavioral changes among district staff. It would cause a lot of pain among students, families, and teachers, but there are pretty clearly, um, identified cuts. These things that I've proposed are going to be more difficult to, uh, achieve, but they're, if, if they are done properly, they'll be further away from the classroom, and they will have more to do with the organizational operations of the district, so that you're just going to create a more, a more, um, a sounder business model. And hopefully, you want to stay away from, you want to stay as far away from the classroom as possible.
Thanks, Mr. Diaz. Yes, Dr. Sarves.
Uh, this was on for information and board discussion tonight. We'll be returning this to the board on a future agenda, uh, especially as we firm up these numbers, and we'll get you the slides that weren't included in the agenda and put those in the board brief.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Will those go on the web as well, as an attachment?
Yeah, I guess the answer's yes to that question.
Why yes?
Did you want, Dr. Sarves, did you want me to send the board copies of these?
Well, we'll put them in the board brief so everyone, it'll disseminate them to everyone that way.
Great. Um, okay, we are on to item F2 on our conference agenda, presentation and discussion of community charter school K through eight. Dr. Sarves?
Yes, we have Angie Dukes, who's, uh, presenting ideas about an elementary charter school to the board tonight. Uh, Angie?
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. Good evening, board members and school, uh, administrative staff. I represent a growing group of parents and educators who are interested in forming a charter school in our community. We first spoke to the school district about our plans early in 2006. By July 2006, our group had formally incorporated and had applied for a state charter school startup grant. We received formal approval, approval and word last week that we had been selected for a $405,000 startup grant with a projected school starting date of fall 2007. With me tonight, I have three people from our group that have prepared brief comments. Lynn Krieger, Mary Ann Caston, and perhaps tonight, oh, and Karen Kiltner, she's here. We have a handful of educators also in the audience and parents. Before I share our school vision, I wanted to introduce Lynn Krieger. She will speak to the issue of how we see another charter school fitting into the district, and a district that's experiencing declining enrollment and considering basic aid as a funding option.
Hello, my name is Lynn Krieger. I am a mother of two primarily, also a working person. I really want to thank you for giving us the time to hear us out tonight, and I want to remind you, as Angie said, this is purely introductory tonight, and we're really hoping that what you do is not reach a decision, but start formulating questions and ask us to sit down with your staff and come back. But while we are all really excited about our vision, we thought we had to take a couple of minutes and answer some of the questions we're, we're sure you'll have, um, to get that out of the way. And one of those is, why do we need another school at all? I'm sure you have that on your minds, especially with all the issues that you're confronting. Uh, we believe that there, that we see a strong demand, and that you see a strong demand inside your own district for intra-district transfers. There are certain schools that are under a great deal of demand. Your alternative and charter schools, many of us know from experience, are generally full. So we think there's room for another model, uh, and we hope to help retain people in the district because we believe really strongly in public education. Uh, we feel very strongly that that's a foundation of the community, and that we think some students are better served by hands-on methods, and that's why so many of your alternative schools are full. The second question we wanted to lay on the table right away is, why would we consider a charter school, the, the you being we, or we as a community, when we're looking toward basic aid, and the two are basically incompatible? Uh, we understand this very well. We don't wish you any harm on your journey toward basic aid. And what we've offered to the staff are really two alternatives to consider, um, related to this charter school, um, problem under basic aid. The first is the idea of developing an MOU that specifically talks about conversion to a school of choice, should there be a switch to basic aid funding to the district. Um, this might, for one thing, serve as a model for your other charter schools in the district, for how that could be handled, so that those charter schools also undergo some kind of conversion, uh, that allows you to enter basic aid status much more pain-free. The second alternative that we threw out is the idea of spinning off perhaps under the county schools, uh, as a charter school, in part to be, to find a way to handle the 200 or 300, uh, transfers in that you have, many of whom are children of parents from Buellton, or Lompoc, or Los Olivos, who work here and transfer their kids into the district so that they can be close to where they're working, and perhaps in that way handle a problem that you'll also have, just as the Hope School District has had, in going from, um, a revenue limit to a basic aid district with transfer students who need to be served somehow. So we're open, we understand what your issue is, and we're open to working with you on that. Third question, I only have two more, is, will this result in the loss of teachers in the district or teaching positions if students are drawn off into a charter school? And our goal would certainly be to have that not be the case. Uh, there are a number of educators already in the district who've expressed an interest in this kind of a model, and we would hope that we could find teachers within the district who are interested and willing to join us on this adventure that we've been crazy enough to embark on. Uh, finally, we've heard for many years about the declining enrollment issue inside the district, uh, and I'm sure you're wondering, are we going to help you or hurt you with that issue? We're hoping, of course, to help. We can't solve that problem. Uh, it's a, it's a big one all along coastal California. But we're offering to share a campus. We are developing special partnerships and programs which we would like to offer to the entire elementary district beyond the bounds of our school. One of them you'll hear about tonight is Ocean Futures. Um, so, I guess the point of laying these questions out and answering them is to let you know we're trying to understand your issues, and we are offering to be in a position to work with you so that we are sensitive, um, and trying to meet the needs of the kids we know, and meet your needs at the same time. So I'll turn it back to Angie, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. What is our vision and what makes us different? In your board packet, you have a, a copy of one of our brochures, and you have a list of elements that make us different. What sets our school apart is our strong focus on four principles: democratic process and leadership, community service, environmental sustainability, and cultural literacy and global citizenship. These are the pillars of our vision. Our educational program is built upon these pillars. It encompasses many of the elements that you find sprinkled throughout the schools in this area. It makes, what makes our proposed program different is that all of these elements occur in one school. Our program combines these elements while still addressing the requirement for students, our students to meet or exceed state standards for car-knowledge subjects. Our special features include expanded curriculum that is integrated across core subjects to allow children to make connections for deeper understanding. Classroom material is culturally relevant, but also offers a broader world perspective, helping children develop multicultural awareness and understanding. Exposure to a second language, for example, English, Chinese, or Spanish, for all the children in our community, learning community. There will be a strong focus on earth science and environmental sustainability, with support from our partners, the Cousteau Ocean Futures Society and Fairview Gardens. Our instructional method, methods will support different learning styles based on current brain development research and the work of Mel Levine and Howard Gardner. We will emphasize whole-child development that balances physical, social, emotional, and intellectual growth. The specifics of our program will be outlined in more detail in our charter petition. We will draft the petition in the coming weeks, and will submit it to the school district around the end of February. One other aspect of our school community that's worth mentioning tonight. Our school will refocus parent and education attention on the larger issue of what it means to be an educated person in the 21st century. Although our definition is broader in scope than that what is currently defined by state standards and the no child left behind policies, we feel that we can successfully address the needs of at-risk children. needs of at-risk children while continuing to hold high expectations for all children. We have given this issue much thought and have a multifaceted approach that takes more time to explain than we have tonight. We ask that you withhold judgment on this issue until we have the opportunity to review in detail our plans in our charter petition. There are well over 500 charter schools in California and over 200 applied for startup grants this year alone. These innovative schools serve a very diverse student population. This growing trend continues to validate that when parents and educators come together, they can create positive learning environments. Our tuition-free school with its small but balanced multicultural student population is a worthwhile, determined, and honest effort toward creating equitable, quality public education for all children, and it can serve as a model that can be replicated in other schools in our area. We strongly believe that all types of learners, especially at-risk children, will benefit from our educational approach, and we look forward to helping the school district better address the needs of all types of students in the public school environment. Interested parents and educators should call us at 777-3151 or visit our website at We have members in our group that speak Spanish, and all of our information materials will be available in Spanish in the near future. In concluding my presentation, I want to let you know that we have two of our community partners here with us tonight. Mary Ann Caston from Antioch University would like to say a few words, followed by Karen Kiltner from the Cousteau Ocean Futures Society. Afterwards, we'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
You've seen me in other contexts, and here I am. I got involved with this group of parents at the point where they were looking for some support from educators, people who've been putting teachers into the schools for a long time. And I listened to them, and I've been following along their process, and I would like to urge you also to think through what they're asking for. I think Antioch can make a very good partnership with this school, as we have with other of the school districts. We work with the charter schools, and we also work with regular education schools, traditional schools, and we would like to see this kind of an education fostered in our community. I'd like to read this letter, if it's okay. It says, "On behalf of the Masters in Education and Teacher Credential Program at Antioch University, I write this letter of support for the Community Charter School. Antioch's teacher education program is designed to educate teachers for the 21st century. Our university fully complies with the California Teaching Commission's standards for highly-qualified teachers, producing a small number of candidates each year. We would like to have a partnership with this school so that our candidates can go there and participate as candidates to learn how to be teachers. We think this school will be a good model for that. It's a great pleasure to work with the parents and educators involved in the development of the charter school, whose vision of education is consistent with Antioch's program. We are dedicated to the most promising progressive methods of teaching and learning, including the idea of diversifying and using hands-on, active learning projects, and we find great resonance with the vision and mission of this new school proposal. Our program uses the California standards for the teaching profession and the teacher performance expectations to evaluate our candidates. Each candidate must also provide documentations of all the passage of CSET so that they're up on all of the content knowledge and the content standards they have to have for compliance with credentials in this state. We also prepare them for RICA so they know how to teach reading, and we make sure every one of our candidates is able to work with second-language learners, knowing all the SADI techniques and English language development. All of that is part of our program, which we would intend to continue on with this group. We wouldn't be able to place our students there unless there was a diverse population. So if this became a school that was drawing a certain white middle-class only and not having enough of the diversified population that we have in our environment, in this city, we wouldn't be able to place our students in that school. Antioch University educates approximately 25 new teachers each year. We view social justice and ecological literacy as essential areas of teacher preparation. They're not sidelines, they're essential and core to educate future citizens and generations for a rapidly changing world. Our program assesses our teacher candidates in both of those areas in addition to the teacher performance expectations that the state puts out. We are thrilled to be able to offer student teaching placements at a school that shares this orientation, and because of the consistency of values and pedagogical approaches, we would be very willing to place our students there in the community charter with experienced teachers who share these values and approaches and who have a viable community partnership with other organizations sharing these values as well. So please consider this letter of support as an endorsement of a partnership with the teacher preparation component of this new community charter. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Karen Kiltner, and I'm the Education Program Director for Jean-Michel Cousteau's Ocean Futures Society and our ambassadors of the Environment Program. And I'm speaking today to you for my support for the Community Charter School in partnership with our ambassadors of the Environment Program to start a new public school to prepare our youth to become the world's next ambassadors and leaders. The ambassadors of the Environment is an innovative educational program designed to promote a better understanding of science, how nature works, connections between humanity and nature, environmental awareness, and sustainable living. Ocean Futures Society and ambassadors of the Environment is interested in partnering with Community Charter School because of our shared goals of helping the next generation live more productive, environmentally aware, and sustainable lives. We both believe that achieving these goals require knowledge, skills, insights, attitudes, and habits that reflect society's dependence on the natural world and the many interconnections between the quality of the environment and the quality of life. From teacher, administrator, and student feedback, we know that the ambassadors of the Environment Program is effective in reaching its goals of engaging youth in the issues relevant to developing a sustainable living ethic and education. The program has proven an excellent resource for schools to give their students a new experience in learning. The challenges we face today are expanding the program to have significant impact at an international scale so that young people around the world will have the knowledge, tools, and motivation to create the kind of future they want. We see our partnership with Community Charter School as the possibility for expanding our program to the Santa Barbara community and beyond internationally. In adapting the core ambassadors program with our partnership with Community Charter, we are working closely with the local community to ensure we address unique cultural and regional issues as well as local educational curriculum standards. The partnership of our AOT program and the Community Charter School is not only of great value to local students but to all the schools and students in the Santa Barbara School District and even to schools around the world. We hope you share our goal with our partnership with Community Charter and welcome the opportunity to discuss further. Thank you.
Absolutely, I'm certain that there are questions. Ms. Malakoff, do you want to begin?
My first question is about facilities. You're past our deadline, I guess, for having asked for facilities from us. What are your plans for, if you were to be granted this petition?
For the coming fall of 2007, is this on? Okay. Well, we have been working with staff and talking about possible options on existing school sites, that there may be some space available in those sites, and so I think that we would be looking for those kinds of options within the Santa Barbara School District.
Do you have a size in mind?
Under the grant that we have received, we need to start with 100 students. So we're proposing that, at this point, our full size, once we acquired as many students as we were hoping to have, we would have about 380. That would be K through 8. So depending on where we were located and how quickly we grew, the space requirements would depend on that growth and how rapid that would happen.
In order to, I believe it's part of the petition process, I'm not that familiar with it, but is that you either need to have a list of potential students that are interested or a list of teachers that are interested in teaching. Do you have a way that you're going?
Under the charter school law, if you're going to start, do a startup school, you need to have 50% of the signatures of the parents or guardians of the first-year students or 50% of the teachers. And we probably pursue both options, we'll see. I'm not sure at this point, but I think we're fairly comfortable that we can get both, either or both.
Why us? Why the Santa Barbara School District? Why not Hope School District or Galita?
Well, as you're aware, we've already had dialogue with Hope School District. The issue, Santa Barbara School District is the largest school district in this area. It's the only district, other than Carpinteria, that is not basic aid already or in the process of becoming basic aid. So it was a logical choice to look at the Santa Barbara School District. They also have existing progressive education, and so it seems like a logical place. Under charter law, we can submit a petition to one district or a variety of districts or the county, all at the same time. So at this point, we're selecting the Santa Barbara School District.
We're the only, of those three that I mentioned, three districts, we're the only one without a empty school or a potentially empty school, so that's why I'm... Let's see. I'm still a little uncertain about the vision. I'm trying to, I went, you know, read what you said, but I'm trying to think of how that's different from some of our other schools, and I'm not real clear still, but I guess maybe I have to think about it a little more. And I guess I have a couple of questions about your partners, Antioch. Besides providing the student teachers, was there anything else as part of that partnership that you would get from that?
Well, they have certainly helped us with working on our vision and sort of distilling down what we're about and what are some of the progressive, current, brain-related research that's out there. I mean, they're pretty much on the cutting edge of that kind of information, and so it's been really helpful to work with them in looking at what our vision of the school is and what makes a really rich and good learning environment. So is there anything that you might want to add to that, Mary Ann? Or is that...
All right. Okay. And then again, with Ocean Futures, they have a program at, is this the program at El Capitan? That's rather expensive if I'm, I sort of just know about it tangentially.
Well, they currently are operating from the El Capitan Ranch property. What they're looking for, and Karen maybe can speak more to this, but they're looking for a school site where they can operate out of, and so in partnering with them, not only would we get the benefit of their staff and having them at our school site, but they're also offering, depending on the site and the configuration of the site and the amount of available space at the site, to make their program also available to the other students on the site, if we were at a shared site, or other schools within the Santa Barbara School District.
This is something you pay them for, though. Is that correct?
There would be some kind of financial arrangement, and we haven't actually gotten to the point where we're talking specifics on numbers, but it is funded.
I think that's all I have right now. I'm going to stop at that.
Thanks. We have about 10 or 15 minutes more for this discussion before we need to move on. Dr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Well, like Dr. Malakoff, when I first read the brochure and spoke to you about this, I was really struck by how similar this program seems to be to open alternative school and to Santa Barbara Charter, the whole-child philosophy, project-based learning, portfolio assessments. And I suppose that's not surprising because you live in the Hope School District, but you're an open alternative parent, is that, that's correct? And one of the things I question is the size that you anticipate this school to be at 380. Our alternative schools, they're wonderful schools, they're very different from our traditional schools, and a lot of times, parents will take a look, especially pre-K parents, they won't really understand the difference between a school that offers a progressive style of education and the traditional classroom, and some will say, fantastic, this is exactly what's right for my family, and others say, oh, actually, the neighborhood school is more my style. When Santa Barbara Charter opened, OAS had a waiting list of over 250 students. Right now, as you said, OAS and Santa Barbara Charter, they're full, but they have pretty small waiting lists. In fact, some grades don't have any waiting lists. A lot of people will apply to both schools. It's very hard for them to judge because people will apply to our alternative private schools, they'll apply to the public Santa Barbara Charter and the public OAS. So it can be very difficult to tell from sort of a general expression of interest how many people will really be involved in the school. One of the questions I had is if you're planning on changing your petition language, because what I see in your brochure is your signature in no way obligates you or your child. And that is not, in fact, what the language needs to read on your petition.
I'm aware of that.
Because, in fact, you need to express meaningful intent to enroll your child at that school in the fall, so I just want to be sure if you plan on changing that.
Well, that's not the petition, and that is the brochure, and the petition will reflect the correct language that's in the California charter.
Okay. So how many parents did you say that you had sort of interested in this at this point?
We have a growing number of parents, and actually, I'm receiving calls and emails from parents every day. I get a handful of those each day, and we have just started to put our brochures out at preschools and go and meet with preschools who are having open houses. We plan to have a full outreach plan in the next couple weeks and coming months to really explore, you know, who's out there that might be interested. So we have probably, I don't know, it's an evolving list, so, you know, maybe we have 100, 125 families, and that was before we started getting, putting our brochures out. So it just grows every day, and they're coming from all the districts, or I mean, all of the schools within the Santa Barbara School District. Some are coming from Galita. It's pretty much regional, the interest is.
And presumably, the petition is a name, phone number, and address so that we can see the in-district children? Yes? Is that the way a petition should look?
I'm not sure if there's requirements for what's specifically on there besides the signature, but I can certainly look into that. It will reflect whatever is required to be on there.
Okay. One of my questions is that, according to charter law, you need to show us that you're going to have a school that reflects the demographics of the district, which in this case, it will mean that your school will be about 70% Latino. It will be almost half English learner and almost half low-income. And our Santa Barbara Charter and OAS do some wonderful things, but there are two things that they haven't been able to do. One is attract a lot of Latino families. Now, when OAS was downtown, it used to have more Latino families, but I checked with them, and they lost some when they moved to the La Colina site, but they were never anywhere near even a majority, even more than 50% Latino. And so I will certainly be concerned to see your plans on how you're going to make the population of the school reflect the district demographics. And sort of attached to that is another thing that those schools have not been able to show is high student achievement based on the state standardized testing. And there are many reasons for that, and there are very relevant reasons for that. It's sort of almost an anathema to progressive education. There, it's sort of almost an anathema to progressive education to try to fit kids into these slots that the state testing requires. But of course, local school boards have to pay close attention to that due to state and federal law. I'm very concerned when we look at the scores for our white students at OAS and Santa Barbara Charter, they're the lowest in our district and well below average. And parents there are absolutely fine with that, and that's wonderful. But when you're talking about putting a disadvantaged population in there, I personally don't feel that it's reasonable for us to expect anything different, that in fact, scores for those students would be similar to scores for the white students in the sense that they would be well below average. And so that's something that I'm going to be looking at personally when you come forward with a petition, is how you, how you plan to address that.
I think Lynn would like to make a comment.
I don't know how she could tell. Quickly, it's hard to know exactly how to say this in public to a school board, but one of the things that does distinguish this parent group is we care very deeply about achievement. And that's one of the, it's an alternative school, but cares very deeply about, I don't know if I'd say test scores, but the results should certainly show there. We want the bar held very high, no matter where these students come from. And the other thing I would say is, I don't want you to be misled by the fact that the waiting lists at the existing charter and alternative schools in the district are very short. Part of the reason for that is that people had experience with that over the years and either ended up like the couple hundred families that are in the Hope District now, which will no longer be an alternative. Other families in our group left public school, and the second parent in the home went out and took a second job, and they went to private schools. That wasn't their first choice. They really believe in public education. So I think the waiting lists are low because you know if you're on the waiting list, you're not going there. Or you don't want to move your child twice, or you don't want to move in fourth grade, or you don't. So I'm not sure that that means that the demand isn't there. There's significant movement among parents and families. And I have to tell you, especially as an older parent, I'm very surprised how much time is spent among parents talking about where your kids are in school and how you can get there and, and what an issue it is.
I actually think that they do go to their waiting list quite often and enroll students that are on their waiting list.
Well, they do, but when you have a waiting list of 250.
I'm not sure, debating this right now is going to, we need to get out as many questions as we possibly can, as many comments. We still have two public speakers. So I, there's just no way we're going to solve all these issues tonight. Go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead for me now.
Okay. Actually, Ms. Parker covered a lot of the same territory that I was interested in covering, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. I was looking at your, your grant application, which I downloaded, as well as the brochure and other information that was included in our board packet. And on the cover letter of the grant application, it says that you're interested in, something about promoting, you know, children to, you know, living physically and spiritually healthy lives. I think it's something like that. What do you mean by spiritually healthy?
I think we were talking about the intrinsic spirit that is in every child, the love of learning and the love of life and exploring and, and just healthy.
Okay, okay. I just, I wanted to see if you were.
Enjoy the sunshine and enjoy, you know.
Interchangeably with emotional health, social, appropriate social development.
We're referring to the intrinsic spirit that's in a child.
Okay. I have to say, once again, you may not like hearing it, but it, the program, the programs that you are talking about sound very duplicative of programs and schools that we already have in the district, both OAS and Santa Barbara Charter. And once again, I want to highlight, I'm troubled by the brochure saying there's no obligation when you sign, and yet our district policy requires meaningful interest. So I'm concerned that you're collecting signatures now that may have been no obligation, but how are you going to sort those out later on when you present your position, a petition, rather?
You can't start collecting signatures until you have your petition.
Until you have your petition, okay.
And then they get to see a copy of the petition.
Okay.
And in there, it says meaningfully interested.
Okay. I also have reservations about filling the program. I know we're not going to solve that issue tonight, but you're talking about reaching a number of 350 to 380. I mean, I've seen differing numbers, so it's somewhere in that ballpark, when the other two schools are schools of about 200. So you're talking about almost double the number of students when they, in fact, do not have significant waiting lists. So I think that's, that's a concern. You mentioned in your grant proposal that you're interested in trying to attract students from the four program improvement schools, that you want to offer them, you know, some kind of meaningful educational alternative. And I, I just want to make you aware of the fact that of those four schools that you named, McKinley, Ila Vista School, Santa Barbara, did I say they're all in district? They're not. Ila Vista is Galita, Santa Barbara Junior High, and they're no longer a program improvement, and Lacumbra Junior High, there have been very few transfers out of those schools. And they have the opportunity to tend other schools in our district. And parents have not taken advantage of those opportunities. So I'm not sure whether or not it will be fertile ground. I mean, you certainly have the opportunity to give it a try, but you need to know that they have not requested transfers in large numbers. This was something new to me. We have never had a WASC accreditation of an elementary or a junior high school. I don't know that WASC does accreditations of anything other than high schools, but you happened to mention it in your, in your materials. The other issue is you mentioned that all faculty will be highly qualified under No Child Left Behind. I'm not sure whether that would be a possible goal. It's certainly not required by our district board policy, but to have highly qualified teachers in every single area, PE, Chinese, Spanish, I'm not sure that you'll be able to meet that bar, so that may be something you want to examine. You also didn't include anything about discipline, and I think that that's a requirement for a petition, how you're going to deal with discipline, suspensions, expulsions, that sort of thing. I hope it never happens, but you have to plan for these things. And then finally, Mr. Diaz had a slide up about charter schools. And I'm wondering, do you know what I'm talking about? It was in, under F2, I believe? And I'm wondering if we can put that piece of paper up again, however briefly.
It's under the possible reductions, Dave?
I'm sorry to be using up time. You know, I just, I want to put it up because, because I want to demonstrate to, you know, charter petitioners, the, the potentially parasitic nature of a charter school on a district. In terms of services that they have difficulty providing for because it's so few students, it can take up a lot of our staff time that's not charged for. Facilities is a big issue in terms of charging. There are many issues, but I really want to avoid a situation. In fact, it's my fiduciary responsibility to avoid situations where a charter is draining down our resources, having nothing to do with ADA, but having to do with students with special needs, requirements, certain program needs that the charter school can't meet because they don't have the numbers or the revenue to deal with it. So that was, that was the point that I wanted to make. I know Dr. Sarvas had a quick comment.
Well, I was taking some notes during the presentation, and I know that the board knows that it cannot approve or deny a charter based on fiscal impact of the district. Nonetheless, it has the obligation to understand the effect of charters on, on the fiscal resources of the district. And particularly as this district moves toward basic aid, the board has already asked for a presentation. In fact, that presentation is scheduled for our next board meeting, January 30, and I invite the presenters to come and listen to that presentation as well. I noted a couple of things. Based on our last projections, we were some three to five years out of being basic aid. This is the same point in the discussion that Hope was in just recently, when they decided to stop allowing additional transfers into Hope. New kindergarten students, new siblings of students already in Hope. A charter school does not help the district by taking enrollment out of the district. That's, that's a misunderstanding. In fact, since a charter can serve students from anywhere in the county, then the charter runs the risk of attracting students from outside the district that this district will be obligated to pay for. We will soon be surrounded by four basic aid districts. If a student comes in from a basic aid district to go to one of our charters, the student comes in with no money and the district pays for it. That's it. Pure and simple. And you'll hear more about that, about that process on the 30th.
I don't quite understand that, Dr. Sarvas.
Mm-hmm.
I thought the charter school got the ADA for that student, that the ADA money traveled with the student.
No, for a student coming in from a basic aid district.
Is that right?
If the student comes in from, from a revenue limit district, then the district gets 70% and then funds the additional 30% itself. So at our secondary level, at least for the next 12 to 15 years, that would be the case, until we cross that, well, we, I'm sorry. We, we would get the basic aid in the secondary level, until we cross that threshold, then we only get 70%.
You're talking, is this all basic aid?
Did I say that wrong? In the secondary district, since we're some 12 to 15 years out, we would get the revenue limited amount. That's what I said wrong. I said basic aid. We would get the revenue limit amount. If a student came in, once we cross the basic aid threshold from another revenue limit district, and most of the other secondary districts are revenue limit districts, and they probably will be for some time to come, then we only get 70% of that. So there is a point at which even in the secondary district, the district funds part of the services to students in charter schools, if they're serving students from elsewhere in the county. And now, the risk is much bigger in the, in the elementary district because we're much closer to that threshold and we're surrounded, or soon to be surrounded, by all basic aid elementary districts. In fact, one of our biggest transfer loads comes to us out of Galita Union. Galita Union is a basic aid district. If those students were to go to charter schools, once we cross the threshold, we would get no revenue for those students. Well, we can wait until next week to hear more about that.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Dukes, Ms. Krieger. We have a couple of public commenters, commentators?
Lynn Rodriguez, followed by Mary Ann Caston.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sarvas and staff. I'll try to be quicker than I was last time, making my three minutes. I'm the parent of two students in the district who've been through our elementary schools, and I've read through the proposal for the community charter, and I met with Ms. Krieger several times to hear a little bit more information while I was still on the board. I have a lot of concerns about what this charter could do to our district, partly because of the success we've already had, which we've been a little bit the victim of with all the schools of choice we already have in our district. We have three charters, two schools of choice that are non-traditional, and eight traditional schools. And as Ms. Harder and other board members pointed out, we do struggle somewhat with managing that number of schools with that many diverse options. It's not a simple matter, and it has financial impact as well as facilities impacts, because we have to provide facilities for each of those sites. And that has become a big issue for us in the facilities master plan discussion that we've been having. We're now looking at possibly closing an elementary school in our district, and I think opening a new charter at the time that we're facing that is, creates a lot of challenges. I commend the parents of interested in this charter for their interest in nurturing a whole-brain learning environment, fostering character development, and a fully integrated curriculum. I think that's what all the parents in this district want, and I believe that that is available to our students already. OAS, Santa Barbara Charter, as has been mentioned, the Community Academy, and the Cesar Chavez Charter School all offer some variety of what's been described for the community charter. I really encouraged, when I met with Ms. Krieger, that the members of the group go and look at all of our elementary schools to see what really is out there. We have just tremendous things available in our schools. I have a daughter attending Harding right now, who's thriving thanks to a nurturing environment, an outstanding principal, a teaching, caring, and an outstanding teaching staff, committed parents, generous donations from community members to provide a science lab, a computer lab, a full-time PE teacher, a library rich with reading material, preschool and after-school programs, and a developing, recycling, and environmental program. We work with UCSB and other local resources to provide a lot of those curriculum elements that they've been proposing. The facility, you can't underscore the facilities issue. When we went through this whole process, finding a place for a lot of small schools has created tremendous stress on this district. And as a parent of students in the existing schools, I really have a problem with that, and I would not want to see.
Thirty seconds.
Have I already met three minutes? Okay. So that's just something we struggled with the whole four years I was on the board, and I see it continuing in the future. I believe students thrive in almost any school environment, given parent support, excellent staff, and rich curriculum, and diverse learning opportunities, which, again, I think our schools already provide. At Harding, we have a motto taken from an unknown quote, an unknown source, "The grass is greener where you water it." I encourage the parents seeking a new charter school to recognize that we already have many of these options and to water that existing grass. I would also like to suggest that perhaps the board write a letter to the CDE, and when you're talking about charter, that they need to look at the districts that the charters are proposed in and at least find out what's already there, so that it doesn't burden a district with additional efforts like this, because I think that detracts in a declining enrollment district in particular. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone involved with this effort, and we will obviously see you back here again at a future date. Okay. We are on to our consent item that was pulled. It was item D5. Ms. Parker?
Yes. I just wanted to be sure that the contract was corrected, D5.
Oh, where it said $1 million?
Yes. So instead of just communities will provide this program at a total discounted cost of $1,500,000 for the three sessions?
It's on page, it's at the bottom of page two of three, in the bold, in the bold. It was, it was a comma instead of a period, yeah.
Well, it's actually an extra zero as well. So, so that just needs to be corrected to 1,500.
So will you make a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve that as amended.
Second. Okay. So there was a motion by Ms. Parker and a second by Ms. Malakoff. All those in favor of approving item D5 as corrected, $1,500, not $1,500,000. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Claire.
Okay. Coming events. I think we certainly have a special meeting in the works to discuss Lacumbra and Santa Barbara Community Academy issues. And the date, it sounds like to be determined.
Yeah, the date. I'm sorry. The date that we had previously talked about was February 6. And I would, I'd recommend that we go to that date rather than go to February 8. We could start at 5:00, so that it would be after school, after work for parents. It would run probably from 5:00 to 7:00, depending on the number of speakers. That's a Tuesday evening. And I think we need to get to it right away.
Okay. And you'll notify the schools ASAP?
I will notify them immediately.
Thank you.
Good.
Board correspondence. Board comments. My only comment is I have a sheet with authorized signatures. I'm going to pass it down if each person could sign it before they leave. Future agenda items. Well, there are a lot of them, trust me. They exist. Then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.